Monterey. Pending night for the staff is Erica Guerrero taking over for gentleman. Christie Savdo and the Community Development Director Kim Cole. And Erica, would you like to take role for the commissioners?
Sure. Chair Freeman. Vice Chair Reed. Commissioner Brassfield.
President.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latasha. I will mark him absent. And Commissioner Milich.
Here.
Everybody here except Terry. At least for the moment. And first item of business then would be the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda. Star is the minutes for October the 12th, 2021. I want to ask for a point of order. Are we supposed to ask the public comment? On a consent agenda such as when there's only one, which is the minutes?
Yes, we do. And so we could have, it would be appropriate to have Erica read into the the record how to participate today and then ask if anyone wants to pull the minutes.
Hey Erica, you're on.
I'd like to.
Commissioner Latasha who came sliding in.
He slid in at 4:00 PM.
Okay.
Right at four.
On time.
Perfect.
I'd like to take this time to introduce how members of the public can join via Zoom. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay. And Comcast Channel 25. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID. The webinar ID is 161-990-8039. Once again, the webinar ID is 161-990-8039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected. As background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit.
If there are members of the public that would like to discuss the one consent item. The minutes for October 12.
I currently see no hands raised via Zoom.
Are there comments from the commission on the minutes for October 12?
Package page 10. It says favor or approval. For Commissioner Milich, I think favor of approval.
I move to approve as submitted and with the edit that Commissioner Dawson just mentioned.
Is that the only one?
That's the only one.
Okay. So a motion has been made to approve the minutes as corrected. Do you have a second?
Circle.
Motion and second. I think we, is there a discussion of the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I recuse myself from item four, the evening item. Do I vote on that one? Or am I supposed to recuse myself from the minutes, voting on the minutes?
No, I think you can vote on the minutes because you did recuse yourself and you're just confirming that you recused yourself.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Being that Steve is an attorney, I think we need to ask him if he meant or of.
I don't recall. If you care to read it again.
So if you're asking for clarification, that agenda item was for the 2101 North Fremont Street, the Avid Hotel. And there was one sentence contributed. Or that's being discussed. It said Commissioner Milich spoke in favor or approval. Instead of the proposed correction, Commissioner Milich spoke in favor of approval.
It was of.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
We're all in agreement. Erica, do you want to take a vote?
Sure. Chair Freeman. Vice Chair Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latasha.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
The October 12th minutes are approved with a vote of seven.
At this point in the agenda, we are opening up the public comments for items not on the agenda. If anybody has a comment for something not on the agenda, this is the time to step forward.
Sandy, your volume is a little low.
You know why?
It's not on. Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to remind the public how to participate via Zoom. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. Since the meeting started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID. The ID for this meeting is 161-990-8039. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To write comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. I currently see no hands raised via Zoom.
Okay.
And does anyone in the audience want to make public comment on items not on the agenda? I don't see anyone coming forward, so I think we're safe to proceed.
Item number three on the agenda is the first item on the regular agenda. And this is to consider an appeal of 456 Foam Street, AP 210198. Appealing the Historic Preservation Commission denial. Resolution H 21-010 of HP 210155. To remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey List. The appellant. The appellants are Dawn and David Hughes. The owner is Diana Hughes Thornton. The district is PC-LH Commercial General Plan Designation exempt from CEQA requirements. And we'll begin with a staff report. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Chair Freeman and Commissioners. My name is Christie Savdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. The project or the appeal, excuse me, is 456 Foam Street, the consideration of an appeal. For the, from the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of the historic permit to remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to approve the appeal and adopt a resolution overturning the Historic Preservation Commission's denial. To remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey List. The property is located on Foam Street between McClellan and Drake Avenue. Within the Foam Street commercial corridor as identified in the lighthouse specific plan. The zoning is planned community lighthouse specific plan. And the general plan designation is commercial. This is showing the immediate surroundings. Right adjacent to the subject property, we have 470 Foam, which is a residence. And we also have the Holiday Inn Express. Across the street, we have 415 Foam, a residence. And 487 Foam Best Western Plus. The property was originally constructed in 1910. It contains a frame structure that is rectangular in plan. There's a detached single car garage with a front gable and board and battened siding. The house has a hip roof with composition shingles. A full width porch with four square wood columns that spans the front elevation. A wood rail is located between the wood posts and the porch has concrete steps to the front walkway. There's remnants of two decorative scroll wood brackets that are still visible. Most of the fenestration is double hung wood sash windows, except for a single oblong fixed wood sash window located to the right of the front door. And here's photographs of the side elevation and the rear elevation. The house has an overgrown yard and is surrounded by a picket fence. There are no records in the building file indicating that there were permitted alterations after the original construction date. However, architectural historian Meg Clovis states in the intensive survey that it does not appear that there was a, that it does appear that there was a small addition constructed to the rear of the residence at some time in the past, likely to extend the kitchen or add a service porch. The property is listed in the reconnaissance survey as 7R or not evaluated. So in 2013, the Architectural Resources Group conducted the reconnaissance survey for the new Monterey area. And 456 Foam, as I indicated, was designated as 7R, meaning it was not evaluated in the survey. The survey did, it had a reconnaissance survey prepared for it. That identified it as a vernacular Victorian style. However, qualified professional Meg Clovis who prepared the intensive survey advises there is a very, very little ornamentation left. Such as two porch brackets that align the house with vernacular Victorian. Instead, the house appears to have the style of vernacular cottage style. And this style is described in the new Monterey context statement as one that has a wood frame construction. Victorian era, era architectural style and form. Gable or hip roof, wood cladding, double hung wood sash windows. One or two story height and a partial width porch, often recessed. On August 31st, 2021, applicants Dawn and David Hughes applied to remove the property from the reconnaissance survey list. The city hired qualified professional architectural historian Meg Clovis to conduct an intensive survey. The new Monterey reconnaissance survey states that in order to be eligible for listing in the local, state, or national historic register. Earliest 20th century expansion of new Monterey from 1902 to 1923. Properties in the new Monterey survey area must be significant under at least one of the following criteria. Criterion one, which is events, patterns, and trends. Two, which is person. Three, design and construction. And in addition, there's integrity considerations. On October 20th, 2021, the Historic Preservation Commission denied the historic permit application to remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey List. HPC's decision was based on four findings. One, the house contributes to the character of the neighborhood and the uniqueness of Monterey and the wide variety of houses represented. And it is important to protect individual houses. Two, the house maintains the integrity of the original setting and the neighborhood. Three, the fact that the house is dilapidated should not disqualify it from being historic. Four, this is one of the few examples in the Canary Row area of new Monterey. Appellant Dawn and David Hughes filed an appeal application to appeal HPC's decision. Since the city's consultant prepared the intensive survey, a peer review was considered by staff to be unnecessary for the appeal. The city code states that upon hearing the appeal, the city council or planning commissions shall consider the record and such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether in its opinion error was made. The city council may affirm, reverse, or modify the action appealed as it deems just and equitable and may exercise all rights of any other officer or commission. I'm going to walk through the intensive survey evaluation. So under the first criterion, national and state events, patterns, and trends. In 1912, new Monterey had 325 homes. Most of which were concentrated above Lighthouse Avenue and owned by working class families. Although the Ferante House was owned by a fisherman and cannery worker. There is no evidence that it is more significant than any other homes associated with the theme early, early 20th century expansion of new Monterey. The intensive survey concludes that the Ferante House is not eligible under national, state, or local criteria. Criterion two, person. The intensive survey states that there is no evidence in the historical record that Jack or Bessie Ferante made any outstanding contributions to the community or the fishing or canning industries. 456 Foam Street is not eligible for listing under the national, state, or local inventory. Criterion three, in order to be considered significant under national register criterion C, or three. Design and construction, a resource must meet at least one of the following requirements. Embodied distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. Represent the work of a master or possess high artistic value. Clovis states that the Ferante House retains some of the character defining features of vernacular cottages. As described in the context statement, and these include its wood frame construction, its hip roof. Horizontal wood siding, double hung wood sash windows, and one story height. However, per National Bulletin 15, if the property type is not rare, it does not clearly possess the defined characteristics required to strongly represent the context. Then it must be compared with other examples of the property type. Clovis conveys that dozens of vernacular cottage style houses were identified in the reconnaissance survey of new Monterey. Nine of which are included in the context statement as good representative examples. Since 456 Foam Street is missing the majority of its Victorian decorative components. And since both materials and structural integrity have been compromised. One of the many other houses in the area would be a better representative of the context. The new Monterey Historic Context Statement states. In general, the buildings within the survey area from this period were not architect designed. And those are not eligible under this criterion as the work of a master. Finally, Clovis concludes that 456 Foam Street does not meet the third part of the criterion C3 because it does not possess high artistic values. And does not express aesthetic ideals or design concepts. In summary, 456 Foam Street is not eligible for listing under national criterion C, California Register Criterion C, or design construction. The Monterey Historic Resource Inventory. In terms of integrity. Although the evaluation for integrity is not usually a consideration for properties that do not meet eligibility criteria, such as this one. Didn't meet any of that criteria. Meg Clovis still included in a limited evaluation of integrity. The setting and feeling of 456 Foam have been severely compromised. Setting is the physical environment of a historic property. The setting was once a neighborhood of working class homes. Today, the block of Foam Street between Drake and McClellan Avenue is dominated by large hotel complexes. Feeling is a property's expression of a historic sense of a particular time. In this case, early 20th century new Monterey. The modest homes that define the original working class neighborhood on this block of Foam Street have disappeared. And the Ferante House can no longer convey this particular period of time. The intensive survey concludes that the property at 456 Foam Street does not meet any of the criteria for significance for the National Register of Historic Places or the California Register of Historical Resources. The City of Monterey's new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey. The Monterey Historic zoning ordinance and the historic record do not support the eligibility of 456 Foam Street. For inclusion in the city's adopted survey list of H2 zoning. And the properties are not historic resources as defined by CEQA. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the appeal, which will remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey. Our staff is available for questions and the applicant should be online. And Dawn, she had a presentation to give as she's here.
All right. Well, let's start with asking you some questions, Christie. Would Meg, Kim be included in asking staff questions, Meg Clovis?
Yes, because she's been an extension of city staff as a city hired consultant.
All right. And we see Meg and we see another Meg on the Hollywood Squares here, but he has a goatee. So anyway, if there are commissioner questions, we should do those now.
I have a, I have a question this time. How long, sorry, how old the building have to be? In order for age to actually be a qualification for it to be historic? I just, I mean, it's, this building is 110, 11 years old approximately. And that just seems like that's old. And I didn't, I don't, it's never mentioned in any of these that just that, that something is old makes it historic and makes it worth keeping. So that's just a question.
Right. It's 50 years or older.
Yeah, we may want to see if Meg Clovis has anything to add to that as well.
Yes, I'll just add that just because that building is old, it doesn't mean it's significant. And so those four tests of significant, which is person, event, architecture, and then there's a fourth one, archaeology. Those have to be considered before a property is considered significant. It's not just age.
But what, I'm just, again, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the age, the age aspect of it. But I mean, for example, there are some, I mean, I don't know if all the Adobes have significant value because of the four criteria, or some of them are just old. And they're worth maintaining around. And I'm, again, I'm not saying that this is in the category of a historic Adobe in Monterey, but I'm just trying to understand the fact that it, you know, where is there a separation, or is there a separation between? You know, even if there wasn't something historic or important that happened there, just because it's old, it's worthwhile to keep. So I, again, I'm just, that's just my, just trying to understand that.
Just because a building is old, doesn't mean you need to keep it. It has to be significant.
Most of our Adobes qualify under type of construction. And then also the relationship to, most of them have very famous connections to at least Monterey history, if not the state of California history.
All right. Other questions? Mike?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a problem with the, with the number four in the what, on the findings that, it says as a result, an error was made. And whether or not have that hanging out there because these are, these are volunteers that have their, have their their heart in the right place. And so I hate to, I hate to say that you guys made an error in the DC.
I had the same question and maybe we included in the answer. How much work has been done and material supplied to us that maybe the historic did not have?
There wasn't, a peer review wasn't conducted because initially the intensive survey was prepared by a city hired architectural historian. So while some of these may have started with the applicant hiring the architect, I mean, the architectural historian to prepare an intensive survey. This started with the city hiring the architectural historian. So there's no new information.
Yeah, I think that's the important point. There's no new information in this packet that wasn't previously evaluated by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay.
So it, in effect, it's a different opinion, not necessarily an error made by the previous declaration.
But if it helps you at all, Mike, you can use the word incorrect and suppose in the place of error. Error is a legal term. And I see that that bothers you. But you know, if they were incorrect in their decision, it's our job to overturn it. And if we use the word error, that's a legal word that appears in the code, but it also means incorrect. That helps.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay. Terry.
But let me ask another question of clarification then. If someone chooses not to maintain or improve a structure and it starts moldering away. Is, is that criteria and some of the features, as it mentioned here, some of the trim may have, or is in the process of disappearing? Is this just another way of saying that it's not historic?
So building condition is not related to whether or not a, a building or a site is considered historic. It's based on the four criteria. I will say that we've had experiences with buildings in the past that are deemed historic. That structurally can't be saved. I mean, those are sort of two separate questions. But you know, I think there are examples throughout California of historic structures or eligible structures that can't be saved for one reason or another. You know, the neglect for this structure has been. You know, we have some buildings. you know, we have some buildings in the city that have, you know, it's been a long time, you know, that they've been, I don't know the words, disintegrating. It might be the word for this, you know, falling apart. And I think the applicant will even share, they, their family purchased this building in the more modern history, and the building was deemed inhabitable by our building department at a specific point in time, and the city took actions regarding the habability of the structure. So we do have structures, I, you know, predominantly, well, I don't know, they're scattered throughout our town that are, some of them are in very bad condition.
Thanks, Kim. From the original survey to this one, how many other examples of this construction exist in the city?
I think she mentioned nine.
I can answer, I can answer this. In, in that context, the 1902 to 1924, there's 50 other examples in New Monterey of vernacular cottages. There were nine that were deemed eligible at the time of the survey. The rest were recorded as 7R, which means that they needed to be evaluated.
And so how many of them exist today? So those nine?
Well, that's an interesting thing, because nine were determined to be eligible. There, as far as I know, they all exist today, except one was removed from the survey list. That was 151 Hawthorne. I do not know why it was removed from the survey. It was a good example, it was a better example than 456 Foam, but for some reason, it was removed from the reconnaissance survey.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Terry?
Yes. So the, thanks, Kristi. So the, the first question is that, doesn't the code, I think Steve mentioned this, the Monterey Code does use the word error, doesn't it?
Right.
So that's, there, you're just using the language of the Monterey City Code.
38 to 11.
And another, next question is about the, now, this is very incidental, but there's a reference to, or in addition to the rear of the building. When you look at the rear picture, you don't, can't see anything. Is it covered up by bushes, or was it, did it fall down at some point, or am I just not understanding the photo?
Sure, I'll ask Meg Clovis to speak to that.
Yes, I can, I can answer this. It's a very, it's a very slight change in the siding between the front of the building and the rear of the building. It's maybe at the most two feet difference in the siding. And so that's one of the clues when you can see that something has changed. I have a feeling whenever that was done, it was probably pre-building permit days. It was probably done very early on, I'd say maybe 1920s. My 1930s, early on.
I understand that we have no building records for the city of Monterey prior to 1947.
From my experience doing the research, that's correct.
It might even be the 1960s, some of them.
So my last question is concerning the findings of the HRC. And finding number four, this is one of the few examples in the Monterey Row, I'm sorry, Cannery Row area of New Monterey. So there, you know, a couple of questions come up with that finding number four. First is that they seem to be making a distinction about not New Monterey, but the Cannery Row area as sort of some significant group of, of historic houses. Would you say that's, that they're actually not just talking about New Monterey, they're actually sort of seeing this as almost like one of those little fisherman cottages down near the aquarium?
Yeah. Right, although it's not in the Cannery Row reconnaissance survey.
Okay.
It's only in the Lighthouse specific plan and in the New Monterey reconnaissance survey. So maybe this, because it's close to Cannery Row extending that association.
Okay, then the last question is still about that condition number four. One of the few examples, the construction of that sentence isn't very careful. You know, they, you're not sure, it's one of the few examples of what? You know, I kind of can interpret that it's one of the few examples of vernacular cottage, for instance. So what is your understanding of that condition number four example?
Sorry, I'm trying to find it.
Well, they didn't say it, so it's.
Yeah. And I'm not sure if the HPC member is present to speak to that. Let me try to find that.
I think one of the challenges, you know, it's fairly recent that the Historic Commission has started to deny removal from the list, it's been happening for years. And one of the things we're struggling with, and we did modify it slightly for 99 Belden, is we're bringing resolutions forward to them to remove the property. So we're trying to capture their verbal conversation in the findings. And what we actually did with 99 Belden, because we didn't feel we had a real good administrative record, we brought back the resolution for them to formally really solidify those findings a second time. I think what I can generally say is the commissioner's general opinion was that the randomness of these homes and was part of the character that was important from their perspective from, for historic preservation. They weren't looking so much specifically at the criteria. In the California National Register, it was much more of a, they thought the, you know, the variety of the small little homes in that area defined it. And I probably, one of the things we need to do in the new year is actually sit down with the Historic Preservation Commission, and I think this will be our, counting the two tonight, maybe our fourth appeal of an HPC decision, and just try to understand a little bit more where they're coming from, and go over the criteria, and then discuss it in more detail. But yeah, it was a general, I think, you know, Kristi's summary here of their, you know, you said it, you know, it looks like a word's missing. And I think that we captured their, their general feelings, and it wasn't as specific.
No, I understand it. It's just that, you know, if you're putting together a finding like you did on Belden, you would hope for, you know, more specific language in a finding, which is a legal term after all. I guess another follow-up last question. It seems to me we've approved Mills Act contracts for houses that were not historic people, but sort of fishermen. You know, that Sicilian and Japanese fishermen in different parts of the city who were not necessarily important people. But I guess the Mills Act approach, of course, this is not a Mills Act application, but still, this, this idea of important people and who's, who, who has importance that we, that there have been other historic designations in the city that, for fishermen, for instance.
There have been individual homes related to, I know the Japanese hard hat divers down in, along Pearl Street, as well as, there's a couple homes in New Monterey that have been designated with the relationship to the fishing industry. You know, one of the things I spoke to Meg Clovis about is the significance based on person, and she really pointed back to National Register Bulletin 15, which I may have her expand on. I think in the past, we have had historians recommend a broader interpretation, if you will, of if it was a cannery worker's home, and this person worked in ex-cannery, their recommendation was that it was eligible for designation. And so there's a nuance there that, you know, I still think we need to go back to the Historic Commission and really talk about National Register Bulletin 15, and maybe challenge our historians a little bit more when they're bringing them forward for consistency. Because I think, from my perspective, there have been slightly different answers over time.
Okay, thanks.
But I know Meg can clarify, she's an expert with National Register Bulletin 15.
Meg, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. Yes, Kim and I were just talking about this yesterday, and I can, I can read directly from Bulletin 15, and this is the quote. And I want to remind you that Bulletin 15 is in the code. This is the quote, "A property is not eligible if its only justification for significance is that it was owned or used by a person who is a member of an identifiable profession, class, or social or ethnic group. It must be shown that that person gained importance within his or her profession or group." So for example, for fishermen, maybe that fisherman started a labor union in one of the canneries, or it was the fisherman who introduced lampara nets. That might be a significant person. But if it's just some fisherman who worked at a cannery or was working on a boat, there's no justification for the significance. I hope that explains it.
That's very, very well, thank you.
Thank you. Dan? No questions? Any other questions for either Meg or Kristi? Would it be fair to say that in this sweep of reconnaissance surveys, that there may be many historic homes out there, but only when somebody comes forward to apply for either specific historic status or to take it off an historic list, we become aware of it? And this could be one of those.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say a reconnaissance survey is a once lightly over of a neighborhood. Some of those buildings in a reconnaissance survey, the historian is immediately able to say this is eligible for the National of California, it's obvious. In other examples, they're given a 7R, which means further research is needed. And part of that has to do with the cost of preparing surveys, which are tens of thousands of dollars. So by at least getting everything in a list, there's a whole bunch not required. And then there's a whole group where there needs to be further research, and that's what sort of happens through this process.
Right. Well, okay, then, how about the applicant? Is the applicant here and want to make a presentation?
The applicant is here.
She's here, okay. I'll pull up her presentation.
Hi, Kristi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody, thank you so much for allowing us to come and present on 456 Foam Street. I am Dawn Piazza, and I am the owner's daughter-in-law. And first, you know, I would say, just looking at the property, we don't want to just speak about the condition of the property today. I'm so grateful that Meg's here with her findings on the significance. But I would also state that I wish that my pictures had shown there is definitely an addition that came at some point later on. There is wood, there is the wood siding in the kitchen. So there may be a picture as we go through the presentation that can show that. So let's go ahead to slide two. So why am I here? Again, the city has hired Meg Clovis. She is the professional that's here to discuss her findings on the DPR. I am here to address the inaccurate statements that were presented in a letter concerns to the HPC by members of the public. And so I want you, like you had mentioned in the beginning, I want you to hear the same items that we presented at HPC, and I did present these findings as well to HPC. I would like for you to hear the same. So in the letters of concern, it was written that the property had been inhabited in April of 2021. And I wanted to assure you that we moved my in-laws out of the property on November 9th of 2019. It has remained vacant ever since then. The reason that we did move them out of the property was because the city came, posted a notice on the door, and said that the property was uninhabitable. And that was two days prior to us, a few days prior to us moving them out. The city had issued a correction notice that, you know, it's hard to read in the notice on the right there, but I did put bullet points here that due to lack of water and sanitation, insufficient cooking facilities, unsafe electrical conditions, no safety measures for smoke detectors or carbon monoxide alarms, and also structural defects. That was the reason they marked this property and flagged it. So a few days after they flagged it on the door, they followed it up with an official letter from the City of Monterey, which was the notice and order that the property was deemed unsafe to occupy. And they gave us, uh, actually, they didn't give us any time to get my in-laws out. They basically said, you have 24 hours to remove them from the property, which we did. But this letter, you can see I blew up the points that they made. And again, it was all around the structure, that the porch roof was failing, the structural members were sagging, the wood was deteriorated. It was in a state of decay. The entry porch floorboards were unstable and posed risk. And there was an accumulation of rubbish and garbage in the interior and exterior of the property. There was an infestation of rodents. The kitchen and the bathrooms were not maintained and sanitary, safe functioning. The, the water was turned off because the plumbing was leaking so badly everywhere that there was just water in the property. So my mother-in-law had turned off the water because of the leaks and the damage that it was causing. And, and then there was so much collection of debris and that they felt it was a electrical and mechanical hazard. So we promptly moved them out of the property. Um, Kristi, there's a video there that you can push play. So the letter of concern had stated that they felt that it was a solid structure, when clearly, clearly you can see from the pictures, the ceiling, there's areas all throughout the home that is caving in and cracked and water damage. This is not wallpaper peeling off the wall, this is the actual wall disintegrating. It's a two-bedroom home, and each and every room has a sagging roof, water damage. We don't know what, really what's behind that, but it's all cracked. And the roof itself is caving in. There's areas of rot, there's areas of holes. And it's progressing, it's not getting any better as it sits there. It's, it's getting worse. There's holes in the eaves, there's missing beams. You can just see our walk-through, it's pretty decayed and, and in disarray. There's a hole there in the roof as well. The porch is also caving in, and the stairs are cracked and sunken. The garage has wood rot, and the doors, there's a garage door, and there's a side door. And they barely hanging on, like, the door's not even on hinges, it's just pretty much rotted. I think that video looped, but it should have shown the garage. Okay, here's the roof, let's see. Okay, that's fine, I mean, it, it did show the, the garage. So let's move on. The letter of concern had stated that there was attractive wood moldings and the original double hung windows. And I have to say, that's pretty laughable because the wood moldings are warped and compromised by the water. The inside of the property, which The inside of the property, which those that has been chewed by, the wood has been chewed by the infestation of rodents that were in this room. And so there's nothing attractive about what happened in this property. Okay, the letters of concern had also stated that the floors and the walls were in good shape. This is actually the area which we believe at some point was added on. Kristi, this should be a video as well. This area that has the black and white flooring, we believe was added on in the back because on the right wall, as you walk in, you'll see the original siding on that wall. But this subfloor is exposed in the kitchen. There's, this is the bathroom, it's a walk-through bathroom to both bedrooms. And you don't want to walk through because the floor is mush. And there's a water damage throughout the floor. The plaster is coming off the walls. There's some electrical that was exposed. So to say that the floor and the walls is in good shape really is the furthest thing from reality. So my summary in response to the letters, the property is definitely vacant and has been vacant since 2019, when we moved my in-laws out. The structure is not solid. You know, Kristi, I apologize, I wonder if we want to go back? The one video that sort of looped on slide five, it did show the cracks in the foundation. I don't know why that video jumped, but if we could go back one, two more slides. Yep, right here. Let's see if we can get to the, sort of to the end of that. Yep. Right here, it should be, yes. So here's the sagging porch and the concrete steps that are sunken. This is the garage door with the wood rot everywhere and the side door just falling up. There's no panels, anything. Here's the foundation, there's huge cracks in the foundation. This was just our visual inspection, you know, just walking around the property, you could see foundation issues. Great, thank you. You can go back to my summary. So the structure is not solid or sound. The wood moldings are warped and chewed. The floors and walls are in poor condition. That kitchen floor, I mean, the amount of rodent feces and urine was pretty deplorable. The property is not safe to occupy and it has been deemed unsafe to occupy. The next slide. So in my response to the planning committee, or really my request to you is to appeal the Historic Preservation Committee's denial to remove us from, to remove 456 from the new Monterey reconnaissance survey. The HPC did not base their decision on municipal city code, which, you know, I'm going to let Meg speak to the findings, but they did not base their decision on code and the guidelines that we, that we all are upholding, right? There's, there's cause for, I mean, there's rules and we've followed all the rules. And none of the elements that were raised by the HPC follows any of the municipal code or the professional historians' findings. There is no historical significance. The HPC based their decision on their gut feeling, how they felt walking down Foam Street and seeing this little blue cottage year after year. They based it on their nostalgia of what could be or what they don't want to change, and they based it on their opinion. So I think you have your city attorney sitting here. I think it's a little bit scary and he would probably tell you that the city is being opened up for risk on this decision because the municipal code was not followed. So for the HPC to say that it has character, I mean, there's really nothing there that meets the significant values that's laid out in the national and California and local criteria. Nothing. There was not one. So our plea to you is to please review our appeal and and help us to be removed from the reconnaissance survey.
Okay.
The next slide, I really just want to speak to on one point. I know it came up at the HPC, you know, how did this property get this way? My in-laws are, my father-in-law is in his 80s. He's been diagnosed with dementia and he's had it for over 10 years. My mother-in-law also has a form of dementia and we thought she was able to take care of him. She's a very strong lady and put up a very good front. She stopped allowing my husband and I and our kids to come to the home because, you know, we had gone many times to help her try to maintain some of the property. And that was embarrassing for her, so she did not allow us to continue to come. Instead, she met us at the wharf, she met us at lunch. She would come to Santa Clara to visit us, but she stopped allowing us to come into the property. And, you know, we feel really blessed that the city did cite them and call to our attention what was going on so that we could get them safely housed. And they are now housed in a, my father-in-law is in memory care and my mother-in-law is in assisted living. And we have been utilizing their funds to take care of them since 2019 in paying this rent, always knowing that we had Foam Street to fall back on as the funds got depleted. But right now, we're in the state of limbo because we cannot legally sell the property as a historic property because it clearly doesn't meet the historic guidelines for the California Local or National Registry. But yet we can't sell it as a nonhistoric property because it's on the survey list. So we're stuck in this limbo, not being able to sell. And we're opening up ourselves also to potential liability because we can't disclose to them what they can do with this property because it's stuck, it can't, it can't go to the National Registry and it can't come off this reconnaissance survey until the planning commission, you know, can help us with that. So lastly, I would just say, here from Meg, again, there is no historical significance. There's one more slide, Kristi. It doesn't qualify for the California or National Registry. I believe that HPC did not base their ruling on city code, on professional findings, or on significance of historical value. They based it purely on their emotion and their opinion. So please consider our appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dawn Piazza. Are there questions for Dawn? All right, I heard there are public comments.
We have HPC Chair Jerelyn Smith-Cavelllo with her hand raised.
All right.
I'll allow her to speak.
Yep.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
You are unmuted, Jerelyn. Welcome.
Thank you. The chair of the commission is actually Carol O'Neill, but I substituted when we discussed Foam Street. And as the chair, I was not major speaker on these subjects, but I did support the group. I think that there, the concern is that in some of the, and I don't have any of it in front of me, I just tuned in. But, but at the previous meeting, we heard that there was a report that included this location that aspired, I guess, because I haven't read it, to have elements of the historical neighborhood supported. And one example would be Pierce Winery. They're in the 499 Wave Street. It's a little house, it's not particularly, you know, I don't know if anybody important lived there. It certainly didn't have a fabulous architect. It's not pretentious in any way, but it adds some charm and a feeling of history to the neighborhood. I think some of the members felt that there are two houses that are certainly historic. And we've just been through a training where there was a part adobe, very derelict property that was saved from the foundation up because people wanted to save it. So some of the members feel that, and I accept this too, that our job is to take a second look at some of these properties, see if there's a way to save it and fix it up. And I know that city code isn't, I know that the applicant's daughter or the applicant, perhaps she's the applicant, said that we didn't follow city code. And we don't follow city code necessarily in terms of if the house is fit to live in. And we all agree, it wasn't fit to live in. And we're sorry that in just two years, we have a property that has disintegrated to that point. But, you know, not every historic building in Monterey had a fancy architect or was an elaborate home. I think we're a town of more humble houses in terms of our historic background. Some of the adobes weren't particularly fancy, yet they were saved. And I think the committee does have a broad view of what houses should be saved. We're also looking for more training because we find it kind of hard to find a path through some of the different guidelines. Sometimes we hear from certified historians that if a wood house is plastered over, you look Mediterranean, it cannot be saved because they've changed it. Sometimes we hear that, oh yes, now they can be plastered over and they're historic. So we're looking for guidelines that give us a little more direction. We're always looking for training. And some of the training is training that I just mentioned, where, you know, barely three walls are standing, there's no plumbing. There's, you know, the animals have lived in it for a couple decades and yet buildings are saved. So we don't have in our minds a criteria that if a building has been derelict for two years, that it's beyond saving. We think if there's an interest, buildings can be saved. And we think there's, so we kind of look at the, maybe a little more positive view of it. I'm very sorry about the applicant's, you know, situation with her parents that were living in that house just two years ago. And I think we all were, and I think we, and perhaps we just see it maybe with more possibility than the, and maybe that's why they voted that way. I supported the vote and I just thought I would tell you some of the lines, so I'm trying to speak for the, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Jerelyn. Is there anybody else who would like to speak from the public?
Once again, to join the meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. Joined by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID. The webinar ID is 161-990-8039. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide public comments by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. I currently see a hand raised via Zoom. Christina, I'll allow her to speak.
Actually, Joe Garcia, how are you? You guys hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm actually the realtor that's selling 456 Foam Street. One of them that are, live with Christina Kennedy. You know, we've been going through this process, it's been kind of a long haul. I think the main thing that we really need to reiterate is the fact that Meg was hired as a professional in this field. And I think it's important that we let her do her job. I mean, she says this in many different ways. I think she's proven directly that this home is not eligible to be considered historic. And it's been very difficult for us dealing with other, you know, potential clients that want to buy this home because we can't get a definitive answer as to whether it's historic or not historic. I appreciate that Carrie Lynn did speak forth on this, but I'm a little bit concerned that she hadn't read the report on 499 Wave Street. I'm sure there was some other relevance as to their decision that was made. But I can tell you that it is, this home has definitely been, has had some issues internal, and it has been affected internally. It's no longer where it once was and it's now sitting on a porch area, be it makeshift or something that was there originally. And I think it's nonconformant at this point, as well as a garage. I think it's a little nonconforming to date, I know we have parking issues and so forth. And we have like a four-foot driveway there right now, which really does not suit anybody. Also, the garage itself is very undersized. And I know the condition isn't one of the main criterias, but I think it should be just based on all the work and money it's going to take just to get this thing back up to par. And we have it listed basically to be sold as land. Not based on the condition of the home.
I have a question.
Okay.
All right.
What would it cost to bring it up to code? And what would it versus, my question goes to what is there really left to preserve? Does a house have to be razed? And then another one put in its place in order to have a habitation? Or can the house be saved? And if so, what's it going to cost?
I think Joe's going to have to raise his hand again.
I was having a great time talking to nobody. All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
What was your answer?
Oh, I was, I just stopped. But quite honestly, to answer your question, I'm not a contractor, so I can't really give pricing on such. But I do know that just, you know, dealing with foundations, it can be upwards from 20 to 8,000, you know, that I've seen in my past experience. And there is some serious cracking within the foundation.
Well, I figured you as a realtor, you as a realtor would certainly know what it would cost to bring it up to code in order to value the property.
Yes, yeah. So I said it's basically going to cost somewhere from my experience, 20 to 80 grand just to get that thing up to par as far as the foundation and lifting it and whatnot. It would be significant.
What about the cracked ceilings and the, did you see the video?
I saw, I've been to the house.
Okay.
I've multiple times, I've walked through it. And there's probably two location in which if I stepped in those areas, I'd be four feet shorter.
What's it going to cost in order to bring this thing up to code and make it habitable?
At the cost of wood these days, it's going to cost quite a bit because you're going to have to rip off the floor. And then as you start peeling away, I know that house is wet because the roof is bad. A new roof for that I know that house is wet because the roof is bad. A new roof for that home is going to cost roughly about twenty K. Right off the bat. And then you're going to deal with framing issues. Uh, so they're going to have to replace some of the frame. The porch, I mean, you can physically see the uh steps front into the ground. So I don't know if they're going to have to do any treatment to the ground as well. And to get a bid on the sewage system is pretty blocked up. You're looking anywhere from ten to thirty thousand dollars for that is what I got a bid from the sewage company.
Okay.
So there's quite a bit that needs to be, and that's why we're pretty much.
So you're probably looking well over a hundred thousand dollars.
And then some, yes, without. And then the electrical is going to have to be completely redone because it is knob and tube.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, thank you for your comment. And if there are any more public comments, Erica, you think? Or Meg?
I don't see. Joe Garcia looks like his hands raised again.
All right, let's close public comment and bring it back to the commission for commissioner comments. Want to start, Dan?
Yeah. Um, I think this is so straightforward.
Dan, could you speak up a little, please?
These analysis of historic structures are objective. The criteria is laid out. It is what it is. This is not significant saving. I know that the Historic Preservation Commission is looking for a second chance, but I don't think they're sticking to observing the criteria, which is justifying after coming off the list. I'll be voting in support of the appellant.
All right, Terry?
Um, I, I find this um application very difficult, actually. I, I, I'm not, I don't feel certain actually um about the, the case that Dan just made. I I actually, after careful consideration, I think the HPC got it right. I hate to, uh, I mean, I, I'll probably be in the minority here, but um um, I don't think the financial hardships unfortunately are part of our consider and I don't think the state of dilapidation is part of our consideration unless the city is going to condemn the structure, which they haven't. So I, um, I, I do believe that the four findings that the um HPC put together do kind of state their case. You know, this is actually this little group of fishermen houses, uh vernacular cottages in the Canario area. There aren't very many of them left. And I think they do make their case there. So that's where I am.
Let's, Mike Dawson?
I'm, I'm kind of dismayed that uh, that this, this uh report is sitting out here and there's not a mention that the floors are falling in, the roof is falling in, that it turned off the water because it was leaking everywhere. And it's like, this is just, this is a tragedy. Um, and, and the fact that, that, that there's a couple old folks with uh, with uh memory problems are living in that just is totally dismayed me. It just, that's just beyond the pale. So, you know, this, this house, this house is just never going to be lived in again. I'm get, I'm guessing. Away, it's going to be historic.
Okay.
That's where, that's where I stand.
Thank you. How about Mike Brassfield?
Uh, like Terry, I'm a little bit of a dichotomy here. I'm trying to separate the habitation and condition of the houses doesn't seem to be relevant to the original topic of whether or not it's historical. As one who used to go through and clean out some of the houses that later became some of our adobes. And back then, this mold that we saw now called black mold, no one paid attention to because of the issues of habitation. But when I look at what was done to the historic buildings to bring them back to their glory. So I'm in a, a little bit of a problem here of I don't like the idea that historic folks made a must, an error. I think it's a difference of opinion. And I don't wear a black robe, but I think that uh one of the, the unsought remedies here is that someone would come in and take down all but one wall and basically bring back the old building. Um, I don't think that's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, Steve?
I agree with Dan. I don't think any of the criteria have been met. And I think the deleverage state of the building, which if, isn't it condemned if you can't live in it? And they've been issued, told they can't live in it. So uh, I think that that is not a deciding issue, but it is an additional factor in addition to the fact that uh the four criteria, none of them have been met. Uh, I agree with Commissioner Fletcher.
Okay. Benson?
Um, so yeah, so I'm, as always, a fair amount to say, but I'll try and keep it short. Um, the city of Monterey, as we say this every single time, and we're going to say it on the next one too, is I mean, the, 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 the historical significance of the city of Monterey is great and best. And we should be looking for reasons to protect um historic or structures in the city because who knows eventually, I mean, the, the working class part of Monterey is significantly disappearing. The fishermen, all that, it's gone, it's going away. And that history is going away. Um, Mike Brassfield, we are a judge. Our job is to make a decision of either one that uh AR, the HPC made an error. Because otherwise, there's no way we can, we can overturn them without making an error, or they didn't make it. So that's, we are sitting here in our on, on high in, in, in our black robes, making a judicial decision whether or not we like it. That's what, what our job is and that's what we signed up for. And if we don't all like our job, then we shouldn't be doing it. But that's, so to me, this is one of those decisions that we have to make. I also agree that all of the conditions, uh, to me, the, the, the real issue is not that um that, that the conditions of his historic nature are met because they clearly have not been met. So, I mean, that, that, that's been shown backwards, forwards and, and here and sideways. I mean, it's, it's not, if you go just by those four historical uh, uh, criteria, it's not historical. Um, it's not a historical uh structure. But is it worth saving? So uh, to me, I'm, I'm not, and I'm, I, I'm going to vote to that it is not historical because again, that's what our job is. But we probably, the city of Monterey needs to take a different look at how we look at some of these structures. Um, that they're disappearing, the, the blue collar, the fishermen, the working class nature of our city is disappearing. And those houses that, that were affordable at the time are going away. They're going to be, they're going to be historical at some point in time. And we need to preserve those eventually. Um, and I think the city needs to, to, to come up with its own criteria. Um, I was not really alive when the adobes were, I mean, I was, I think, baby just starting. I was, I was born in sixty seven and the adobe protection started right around that time. Back in the day, there was no reason, there, without the History and Art Association, the adobes would not be here. Without their fighting for them, without the citizens fighting for them, they wouldn't be here. We, we didn't think that they were important. We thought urban renewal was important. We thought putting in the, the, you know, making a modern city is important. But that's not the case. Um, so to me, it's really more about structure of what we should be doing and the city should be looking at ways to protect rather than um, um saying it's not historic. Um, not this mind, but again, I, there's no question that the criteria that was put in forward in front of us, um, we can't, there's no way to make a decision that is not, that it's not historic based upon those criteria. So that, that's, again, I think we should look at what we're doing and how we're doing it. And um maybe have the city come up with its own way of deciding how uh structures are historic. So.
Okay. Makes perfect sense to me. And I agree with Dan as well. And the salient sentence in Meg's analysis was that dozens of vernacular cottage style houses were identified in the reconnaissance survey of New Monterey, nine of which are included in the context statement as good representative examples. So I don't think this is a good example. I also don't think that the applicant and her real estate agent did themselves any favor by pleading financial need because our decision really isn't based on that. Our decision is based on whether or not it should be in the historic context statement or not. And so I'm going to vote to uh support the appeal. Um, is there a motion?
I have a motion. My motion, I move that uh we grant the appeal of uh four, five, six phone street, AP dash twenty one dash zero one nine eight, appealing the Historic Preservation Commission denial resolution H twenty one dash zero one zero of HP dash twenty one dash zero one five five to remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey List.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion?
My question would be is, what are we basing it on? An error?
What are our findings?
That's what I thought I'm asking. What are the findings?
I, so I would recommend to add on to that, that, that the motion would include based upon the findings that were presented in the staff report and in the draft resolution.
So, so included. So included.
Thank you.
Call for the vote. Chair Freeman? Approve the appeal. Vice Chair Reed?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lataza?
No.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
Okay, this motion has been approved with a vote of six. It is appealable to the city council within ten days. We have applications at the planning office. Um, you can find them online.
All right. Now, it is five twenty and we have an evening meeting that begins at seven. We have two more items on the list. One forty Franklin Street and uh nine ninety nine Beldon Street. What would you suggest?
No, it may, if we got through the staff presentation, it may take about ten to fifteen minutes, but I don't think we'll probably get through public comment and the staff presentation. So it's up to you if you want to just hear the staff presentation and then take public comment in the evenings, evening starting at seven o'clock? Or do you want to just delay the entire hearing till seven o'clock?
Well, I think we should do as much as we can. What, the normal time for stopping the meeting is five thirty? All right. And this gentleman is here. What, what item are you here for? Okay, well.
He's the applicant.
All right. Well, let's hear the staff report then. And uh we will at this point, just up in the last ten minutes of our meeting today, consider the appeal of nine ninety nine Beldon Street, appealing the Historic Preservation Commission denial to remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey List. The applicant is Robert Winkle Black. The owner is Robert Winkle Black. R three five zoning district, medium density, residential general plan designation. Christie?
Thank you, Chair Freeman and Commissioners. My name is Christie Savdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. Uh, the application is consideration of an appeal of nine 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 Beldon Street, appealing the Historic Preservation Commission's denial to remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution to approve the appeal, which will remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey. The property is located at the corner of Beldon Street and Line Street, approximately seventy from David Evans. The property is zoned R three at the medium density residential general plan designation and is located in the new Monterey neighborhood. The single family residence was constructed in nineteen fifty six. It is rectangular in plan with an attached garage on the west side. Exterior walls are clad with V restic siding. That's a type of siding that features a deep V grove that creates a shadow. The gables are clad with flush vertical boards and of roughly scalloped ends. The house has a gently pitched front gable roof with a modest overhang and closed eaves. The garage has a low pitched roof. The fenestration of the garage consists of two light aluminum sash casement windows on the west side and a single light wood sash window on the south side, which was installed about nineteen fif, nineteen ninety five. There are two sheds that sit at the rear of the property. And here is just a few other pictures here. Showing the attached garage. South elevation and the rear of the property and showing the um detached sheds. The property was included in the new Monterey reconnaissance survey. It was listed as seven R. Uh, so in order to be eligible for listing in a local, state or national historic register, uh, early twentieth century properties in the new Monterey survey area must be significant under at least one of the following criteria. Criterion one or A one events, patterns and trends. Criteria B two, person. Criteria C three, designing, construction and integrity considerations. So the intensive survey was prepared by Dr. Anthony Kirk and the applicant hired Dr. Kirk to prepare the intensive survey. Under criterion A one, uh, the property is not associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of US, California or Monterey history. Under B two, person, the house was owned by Ramon and Nancy Winiger. Ramon Winiger worked as a carpenter for HD Winiger Contractors, a Carmel firm in the mid until late nineteen seventies. He sold the property to Carmelina Delphine Dutra, about whom nothing is known. There's no evidence that any of the property owners achieved prominence in a specific field or made a meaningful contribution to history. Criteria C three, designing, construction. The house features a couple contemporary style elements, but it cannot be said to be an example of contemporary architecture. Dr. Kirk states, the house does not have distinctive attributes or characteristics of a specific style of architecture, nor is it representative of a specific period or method of construction. The house is not the work of a master and does not possess hieratic value. It does not yield important information to history. In terms of integrity, uh, Dr. Kirk confirmed that the house still maintains its integrity. The intensive survey concludes that while the property maintains historic integrity, it does not meet any of the national or state criterion. Therefore, the intensive survey concludes the property at nine 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 Beldon Street does not appear to be eligible for listing in the National California or Monterey Inventory of Historic Resources. And the property is not a historic resource as defined by CEQA. On August twelfth, the Historic Preservation Commission denied the application to remove the property from the reconnaissance survey. And so I wanted to show the motion. This was the first motion. Cause there was a subsequent motion to bring, we brought it back to, um, because findings weren't made at the August meeting. So for the August meeting, um, there were three um eyes to remove the property and four noes.
Excuse me, Christie, but uh
There's four names.
There's four, there's four eyes in three noes.
Yeah, they got them back.
Listed. Is that, is that typo of some sort?
That, that's just a typo. They um, they denied the application to remove the property on a four, three vote. So we'll make sure to go back and correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. I hadn't noticed that. And then on a subsequent meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty one, the Historic Preservation Commission adopted findings because they didn't at the August meeting. So staff drafted findings based on the uh meeting and then it was decided um at the October HPC meeting that the four findings would be approved. And they include, um, the uniqueness of Monterey is the wide variety of houses represented and it is important to protect individual houses too. Two, "The house is unique and is representative of the post-war growth of new Monterey." Three, "The fact that the house is dilapidated should not disqualify it from being historic." And four, "As stated by Dr. Kirk in his report, the house maintains historic integrity of location, setting, design, materials, workmanship and feeling." So upon hearing the appeal, the city council or planning commission shall consider the record and such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether, in its opinion, error was made. The city hired qualified professional May Clovis, who evaluated the intensive survey prepared by Dr. Anthony Kirk, once the appeal application was filed. May Clovis concluded that the property does not meet the eligibility criteria to include the building as a significant resource in the National Register of Historic Places, the California Register of Historical Resources and the Monterey Inventory of Historic Resources. The property is not a historic resource as defined by CEQA. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the appeal, which will remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey. Staff is available for questions. The applicant, Bob Winkleblack, is here. And also, Dr. Kirk had a few slides he wanted to share.
Well. Why don't we have some quick questions for Kristi?
I don't have any questions.
Anybody? All right. Hearing no questions for the staff. Would you like to make a presentation, Mr. Winkleblack? Okay.
Thank you.
Now there is. Thank you. Usually I talk loud enough, but I appreciate that. Commissioners, I've been a building contractor on this peninsula for about 46 years now. And I have to say that I was taken aback that this property was even on 7R, let alone the HPC saying that it was significant. As a builder, a low pitched tarned gravel roof is about as cheap as it could, could be built. It has mostly sweating, single pane aluminum windows, which are no longer legal and pose problems. It has an automatic roll-up garage door. To say that it was historic and to be preserved, I, I have no idea how we got to that point. The criteria that staff has, has told is for sure, there's no famous residents. There's nothing noteworthy about the trim or the fascia or the siding or the eaves. Obviously wasn't, you know, a big dollar architect that, that made the house what it is today. And one of the commissioners, I can't remember who it was, had, had something that caught my ear about the previous 456 that was 100 and some odd years old. Bring it back to its glory. I believe as a builder, there is, there are structures that can be brought back to its glory. This never had any glory to begin with, I'm sorry to say. I don't, yeah, I won't comment on 456 as a building contractor, but I was listening to your questions and they were, they were well brought up. This home has no insulation. It's at a, built at a date when the electrical safety that, that is inherent in our code today is, is not addressed. Old plumbing and the conservation of water is not part of the presentation there at 999 Belden. And there's certainly no energy conservation measures or appliances that would meet today's standards and quality. So I would entertain any questions. I do know the house and underneath the house many times and chasing down old plumbing leaks and so forth. Dolly was the lady that I purchased the home from. So I guess it's only had three owners.
Okay.
Love to say I was famous, but I don't think that would qualify.
Famous for the walk that you have on your t-shirt. Any questions for Mr. Winkleblack?
Well, maybe you're not famous, but not yet, Mr. Winkleblack.
There you go. I'll hold that thought.
Always room for the future. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. And I think at this point, before we get to public comment, we should probably adjourn the meeting and pick it back up at 7:00, this issue. Does that seem reasonable, Kim?
We could, we could have public, public comment now, so that they don't have to stick around for three hours.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right.
Just to remind you too, that Dr. Kirk has a presentation too.
Well, that being said, I think it's important to listen to Dr. Kirk's presentation and then go to public comment. And then, so let's adjourn until 7:00 and we'll pick this back up at that time.
I, I got.
Well, gavel.
Meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Monterey. We are in the middle of item number four. Consider the appeal of 999 Belden Street, AP 210148. Appealing the historic preservation case in denial. To remove the property from the new Monterey Historic Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey List. The appellant is Robert Winkleblack. And the owner is Robert Winkleblack. And it is R 35 zoning district, medium density residential plan designation. And we left off after Mr. Winkleblack made a presentation. And I, and we've asked him questions, so that's where we are. But I understand, Kristi, that Dr. Kirk would like to say something as well.
Yes, he has a presentation and I will share that.
I will say before we begin the meeting, we have four items to hear. This item on Belden Street, an item on Franklin Street, a use permit application, and a proposed amendment to the Lighthouse specific plan. That's a lot to cover. So if you would, keep your remarks brief and succinct.
Ma'am, could we have a roll call?
Oh, roll call. Would you call the roll? Erica.
Chair Freeman. Vice Chair Reed. Commissioner Brassfield. Commissioner Dawson. Commissioner Fletcher. Commissioner Latassa. Commissioner Milich. Dr. Kirk, if you would unmute yourself.
So are we going to do public comments of items not on the agenda after Dr. Kirk's, because it's continuing? Because we are starting the evening session and do have to accept public comment on items not on the agenda.
Then we should start with that. And then we should go then into the agenda items. So if there is anyone who has something to say about an item that is not on the agenda, this would be the time to step forward. And Erica will give phone instructions for those who are phoning in.
Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey and Comcast 25, channel 25. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-688-8864, then enter the webinar ID. Tonight's webinar ID is 161-990-8039. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit.
And do we have anyone on the line that's wanting to make public comment? And I guess I will also ask any members of the public, do you want to make any public comments on items not on our agenda at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Not only would comments be on items not on the agenda, but also within the purview of the Planning Commission. Because sometimes we get people who want to talk about things and there is just nothing that we can do anything about. And we tend to leave out that second part when we ask people if they would like to make comments on things that are not on the agenda. For future meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone coming to the lectern, so we have no one in person. Do we have anyone online?
There are no members online with their hands raised.
All right, then let's go forward with Dr. Kirk's presentation.
Okay, while I share that, I would ask Dr. Kirk to unmute himself on the lower left-hand side of your screen. You should be able to unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. I arranged a series of slides that will take us around the house counterclockwise. And we're starting with the front of the house, which faces east. And you can see the door there on the inset deck. There's a large window to the right. Whether that's an original window or not, I'm unsure. The casing seems to be slightly smaller than the other casings, but it might well be an original window. I really don't know. So let's go to the next slide. This is the side of the house. You can see here off to the far left, there are some vertical cuts. Whether there was something there at one time, I have no idea. It is the rustic siding that is the wood that is affixed to the frame. I should say that the pageant Turnbull, who did the initial event, well, they actually just listed the building, say that it's a semi-detached flat roof garage. It's actually an attached flat roof garage. If we go to the next slide, we'll see that. You can see here where there is actually a single wall between the roll-up door of the garage and then the house itself. And then we go to the next slide. And this window is an addition. And as you can tell, the house is not in very good condition. The rustic siding is warped here and there. And the, the, the top of the building, you can see particularly here on the second part of the wood there has wasted away. Let's go to the next slide. part of the wood there has wasted away. Let's go to the next slide. And the, the windows are either casement or casement combination windows. This is a, the big window in front of us is a casement combination window. House obviously needs to be painted. The eaves are closed eaves. And then go to the next picture, if you would please. And the, this is ostensibly a house that was built in the contemporary style, according to Pageon Turnbull in two thousand nine. And according to Virginia Savage McAllister, the author of A Field Guide to American Houses, there are a number of identifying features, a low-pitched gable roof, which the house has, widely overhanging eaves, which the house does not have, commonly exposed roof beams. And there are three at the front, windows generally present, present in gable ends, and there are no windows in the gable ends. Built with natural materials, which is true of this building. There's a broad expansive uninterrupted wall surface typically on the front. That's not present. Entry door may be recessed or obscured. That's also not present in a symmetrical plan. So symmetrical plan is rectangular in shape. So even on a provincial level, it's not a good example of the style. If I were to evaluate it on my own, I would say it had no style. And no style is different than vernacular. Vernacular has a specific meaning. And this building does not fit into the definition of a vernacular building. I evaluated the building. I said it was not associated with any event or series of event, which would be which would be National Register one, A or California Register one. And the California Register has the same criteria as the Monterey Register has. It's not associated with a significant individual. It was originally owned by Ramon and Nancy Winiger. And Winiger operated as a carpenter, Winiger contractors in Carmel. And the mid to late nineteen seventies, he sold the property to Carmelina and Delphine Dutra. And I found no information on them whatsoever. The, it is, it is obviously not a good example of the contemporary style. It's actually a very bad example, if you want to say it's contemporary style. But in my opinion, it has no style whatsoever. May Clovis, as you know, wrote a peer review of my evaluation. And she doesn't say so in the peer review. But she was a Monterey County historian for something like thirty years. And so she's highly knowledgeable on the matter. And she concurred completely that it wasn't significant under criteria A, B, or C, and criteria D, which is one, two, three, and four, has to do with archaeol- archaeological sites. And if you have any questions, I would attempt to answer for you.
Other questions for Dr. Kirk? Terry, Dan? Zoomers? Mike?
Nope, sorry.
Mike Brassfield?
You're muted.
Hi, Mike.
For Dr. Kirk, regarding the Dutra family, there's a lot of Dutras on the peninsula. Have you checked to see if they're, what relationship?
Yeah, I couldn't find any Dutras that had the name of Carmelina or Delphina. I'm not sure if it's pronounced Delphine or Delphina, but I couldn't find out anything about them. I believe it's a Portuguese name, isn't it?
I just know that there's a lot of Dutras on the peninsula. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I think a lot of them were involved in fishing or dairy work.
Yes.
Lot of dairy work, too.
And I just wanted to, you know, what relationship they may have been to. That would be another alternative way of finding out about the people. I, when I look at somebody who obviously had a business in Carmel, I don't know what level of fame that is. But I can, the previous case, when it was a man and a woman who came from different countries here, got married and were in the fishing industry at two levels. I, I thought that was mighty interesting in its own context. So in this case, I, I guess it's all, what level of, of fame?
Yeah, and as I said, I found out no information on them whatsoever. So whether or not there was any level of significance to their lives, I do not know.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hanson?
No comments.
Yeah, I have no questions either. At this point in time, thank you, Dr. Kirk. Thank you very much. Are there any public comments regarding this application to approve the appeal? For, the application for an, an appeal?
It looks like there was a hand raised, Geraldine Smith Cravelo, but it has been lowered.
Okay.
Oh, it's raised again. Go ahead and allow her to speak.
Hello, this is Geraldine again. And hi, thanks for giving me a chance to say, as you noticed in the beginning, prior to your break, the first round was two, two meetings ago, and it was a mixed vote. You remember that? And then the second, the last meeting, I was the chair. And I wanted to say that even though some of us did not vote to for this property to remain on the survey, we did vote to say that if it were to remain, those would be the findings, if that adds anything to your understanding. This was different than the last one. It was a mixed, a mixed vote. And I, I happen to think that since we had taken two or three of the properties off in this little area, and that there are lots of of different types of used apartments, as well as houses on, on David. I didn't have an objection to have it be taken off. For the members that did have an objection, primarily it, they were thinking it was an example of post-World War II housing, perhaps, to house military families. And they just wanted to consider it. So thank you for, I'm sorry, you have to take it another time, but that just gives you a little background in terms of the, the way the vote proceeded at the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman.
Four people took it off and three, I mean, three of us voted to take it off and four did vote to keep it on the survey.
Does anyone have questions for Jerry Lynn Cravelo? Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let's close public comment and open commission comments. And let's, let's begin with our remote people. You want to start, Mike Brassfield?
Oh, I think this is a lot easier than the last one, a little bit more apparent. And I'll probably be supporting it.
Mike Dawson?
I agree with, with Mike B. This, this, this was a, this was a close vote at the HPC, which is, which tells me a lot. So I think, I think this is a, this is, yeah, not a slam dunk so much as well, is a, is an easy vote. Thank you.
Steve?
I, I'd like to hear from the architects first.
Okay. Terry?
Yeah, I, I agree with the mics. This one is much easier than the last one. It's really a, I don't see any of these criteria even coming close. So I'm not sure what the HPC was on with this one. But like Mike B said, it was a close, a close vote. And I, I think I'll be supporting the appeal.
I feel the same way. Support the report that was done and the findings and staff's recommendations. So I'll be supporting this.
Okay. And Steve, now that you've heard from the architects, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I agree with everyone.
Hanson, do I call on you yet?
I, you have not. But so I will move to approve the appeal. Application and overturn Historic Preservation Commission denial, resolution H twenty-one dash oh oh five of historic permit HP twenty-one dash zero zero nine to remove nine-nine-nine Beldon Street from the new Monterey Context Statement and Reconnaissance Survey List at nine-nine-nine Beldon Street pursuant to the staff report and findings in the proposed resolution.
Oh, second.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve the appeal. And a second by Dan. Any discussion of the motion?
Only a, a comment. I find it a little hard to say that this is an error. I would just say that if, for the, the record that it's, it is, comes down to more of an opinion. And just as they were split, I, I think we split from the majority the last time.
Right. I have one comment, and that is, is that just as the prior item, we, we really should not have considered the financial situation of the applicant. I like the fact that number three on this findings list is that the fact that the house is dilapidated should not disqualify it from being historic. So we're really judging the historicity of the project and not any extenuating factors. And
I was going to say too, that the, you know, sometimes houses, as they get older, gain appeal. Like the Eichler House is the classic century thing that was
Oh, God bless you.
Such in its favor thirty years ago. Now they're the hot item. And I don't think this house will ever have that happen.
Won't achieve it. No, I don't think so either.
Even though the owner is famous.
So Eric, you want to call for the vote?
Sure. Chair Freeman? I, I vote to approve the appeal. Vice Chair Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latasa?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
This motion carries with a vote of seven. The decision is appealable to the city council within ten days. Applications are available online and can be submitted to the planning office.
Excellent. Thank you, Erica. This is Erica's first day taking, filling the shoes of Jennifer Cleary and doing it very well. Number five on our list is consider one forty West Franklin Street, Suite two oh seven. A use permit, UP twenty-one zero one six six for a massage establishment. The applicant is Dominica Golf. The owner is the Orgway Building LLC. PCD zoning district, commercial general plan land use designation. And we will begin with a staff report.
Madam Chair, before we get going, I have to recuse myself. My client, I represent the owner of the building and will not participate in this agenda item. So I am going to mute and turn off my
Don't stay away long. We have other things to consider. And we do still have a quorum.
So we have six commissioners that can vote on this item this evening. Can everyone, especially at home, see the screen for one forty West Franklin?
Yes.
Great. This was actually for Andi Rivera's project, and she was unable to present in the evening session. So I'm going to do my best job filling in for her this evening. As the Planning Commission is well aware, massage establishments in the city of Monterey require a use permit based on the city's municipal code requirements. The proposed massage establishment is located at one forty West Franklin Street. It's a three-story building located at the corner of Kai Principal and West, West Franklin. It has a commercial land use designation and it's planned community downtown zoning. And the proposed use is ocean flowers therapeutic massage. The owner is the massage therapist who specializes in something called lymphatics. And they propose to be open from nine AM to seven PM, seven days a week. And they anticipate a one to a maximum of two climate, clients per appointment. In terms of commercial use, the water district confirmed the massage business appropriate for the office use in terms of water use. So there's no increase in water allocation. And the site does not come with parking, which is similar to many of our buildings in the downtown. And there's no minimum parking standard for commercial uses in this zone. And as you're well aware of, this zone is pretty well-served by our east and west parking garages that provide an extensive amount of public parking in that area. From staff's perspective, this is a very straightforward application. The planned community downtown district allows for a full range of commercial uses, including massage establishments, which are permitted with a use, conditional use permit. I do want to mention, and I think all of you know, there is an area in the downtown where we don't allow massage establishments. And that's on the first floor of Alvarado Street, as well as the first blocks of Del Monte. So just so you're aware of that. The proposed project, from our opinion, would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood. The additional massage permit will also be required to obtain the police department permit, which they do background checks on all massage therapists as part of their licensing. It's within an enclosed building. And as I mentioned earlier, there's no parking requirement. And the proposed use will comply with any specific condition as listed. And that's basically that they have to obtain their police department permit as well. So with that, we're recommending that you approve the use permit with conditions of approval.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim from the commission? Just jump right in there.
Kim, just a quick one. How many use permits do we have for this type of use?
I don't have an aggregate number. I, I know this past year, I think this is our third permit that we've, we just approved one on Kai Principal. We have this one, and there was one, I believe, on Dormity Court. So there's like three or four permits, I think, this year.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
I was looking, I was looking at packet page eighty, the, the, the layout of the, of the plan. And, and I was looking for restrooms, and I didn't see any. Could someone point something out to me?
I actually don't know where the restrooms are in the building. And I believe the applicant is going to be online with us this afternoon, participating via telephone. And I can bring up that packet page, but it doesn't show, it just shows the interior of the space and not
I couldn't, I couldn't spot a restroom.
Yeah, I, I don't know where the restroom is on the second floor of the building. It does not appear to be within the tenant's space specific.
Gotcha.
Anyone else? Question for Kim?
So it's not required? Is that right?
No, office uses and massage uses are not required by city code to have a restroom. Like in their space, most often there's one available in the building itself. And I'm not aware of where that restroom is within the building itself.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no further questions for Kim, is the applicant available to make a presentation by phone?
So I know Fernanda spoke to the applicant today. They can go ahead and raise their hand if they're participating this afternoon. Evening, thank you. And you can hit star nine to raise your hand. Dominica, are you on the phone? I'm not seeing a hand raising, Chair.
I hear by, from some people that they feel it's hard to get into the phone line.
There we go.
Okay.
So. Wait a moment, thank you. Can you unmute her? Dominica, you should be able to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, this is Dominica Golf. And there is a bathroom right outside my door, right down the hall.
Thank you.
It's right, and it's the restroom that we all use for the build, for that floor.
Yeah, the report said four restrooms and two sinks in the waiting area, is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, it's a very big bathroom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dominica? Dominica, I don't think they have any more questions for you.
Okay, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Time to open public comment. There any, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment on massage establishment proposed for Dominica Golf?
Once again, to join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four, then enter the webinar ID. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. I currently see no hands raised via Zoom. And with nobody here to speak, I believe it's safe to move on.
Okay, let's have Commissioner comments. Anything, Dan and Terry?
It seems like a thorough staff report, and they have met all the requirements for this use permit. And I'm in favor of approving it.
All right. And for those remotely, is there, is there any comment to make?
No, not from me.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the use permit application UP twenty-one dash zero one five six.
Six six.
Oh, it looks like five six.
Okay.
At seven twenty-four Lighthouse Avenue, per the findings and conditions in the staff report.
I think it's a one forty West Franklin.
It's six six.
I'm sorry, I'm, you're right, I'm reading the wrong one. So I'll make a motion to approve the use permit for UP twenty-one dash zero one six six at one forty West Franklin Street, Suite two oh seven, per the findings and conditions.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to approve the use permit. Is there any comment on the motion? All right. Hearing none, you want to call for the vote?
Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reed has recused. Commissioner Brassfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lataza?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
This motion carries with a vote of six. The decision is appealable to the city council within ten days. Applications are available online and can be submitted to the planning office.
Congratulations, Dominica, your, your use permit application is approved. Now we're moving on to, am I going to, such a long, huh, number seven? Even though it's number six, because we skipped number six, all right.
No, we have to, you're number six, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'd like to have the commission continue the item to December, I just got my phone, I believe it's December fourteenth. The applicant has requested the extension as they're putting together a video for the commission.
I shall move.
I'll second it.
Any discussion of the motion? I'm going to call for the vote, Erica.
We have to open that for the public comment, Kim.
Yes, so, oh, does anyone have a public comment on that in the audience? Seeing none, if anyone online would like to make a comment on the continuance of three oh one Casa Verde way to December fourteenth. See no hands raised, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Is Vice Chair Reed back? Oh, yes.
Yes.
Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lataza?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich? Motion to continue has passed by a vote of seven. The item will be continued to December fourteenth.
All right, then. Item seven. Item seven. Consider seven twenty-four Lighthouse Avenue use permit application UP twenty-one zero one five six for a recreation and entertainment services major business, including rage room and paint splatter room. The applicant is Justin McLean. The owner is Igor Gunsuk, Gunsuk, New Monterey Center LLC, the PC Lighthouse zoning district, commercial general plan designation. I have something to say, I've been advised by the city attorney that I need to disclose that I have discussed both this item and the subsequent item, the two members of the public. And the nature of this, and she's asked me to be somewhat detailed, is that I invited a New Monterey resident, Sharon Dwight and Brenda, whose name I don't, last name I don't know, to walk Lighthouse Avenue and look at all of the real estate to see what might be appropriate for downtown, down first floor residential. In so doing, when we got to the New Monterey Shopping Center, the little shopping center in the middle of the block, I pointed out to them that people may not be aware that there has been a use permit application for a rage room in what was the laundromat at the end of the shopping center, and asked if they had any knowledge of this type of business. And Sharon was kind enough to find an article which is submitted with this package to describe somebody's opinion of what they are. Is it sufficient disclosure?
If that characterizes your discussion, I think that would be sufficient.
Good. So this is the second time that we have heard this item, and I think we should probably begin with a staff report.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners. I'm sure you all remember this application from approximately two weeks ago. And you gave staff and the applicant a homework assignment to provide additional information. And so we will be doing this this afternoon or evening. Staff's recommendation continues to be to adopt the resolution, being the use permit. The subject property is located on Lighthouse Avenue, right next to the gas station. It's known as the New Monterey Center, it's seven twenty-four Lighthouse Avenue. And so I'm going to go directly to your questions, because we spent a lot of time last meeting identifying those concerns. First question that I heard from the planning commission was what types of safety equipment would be required for the use? There was a desire to have an explanation of the location of the security cameras, and could security cameras be included in each room? Third is how would potential customers be screened for alcohol or drug use? Would they be allowed onsite, considering this is a use where bats and other devices would be allowed? And then you also asked us to look at a training class that workers could attend to learn how to discern alcohol or drug intoxication. And you were also curious as what has been the experience of other cities with this type of use? Has it resulted in increased police calls, safety concerns? So part of these are the applicant's response, and then staff has recommended some conditions of approval. After hearing the concerns of the planning commission, the applicant modified their proposal to eliminate the axe, the axe throwing at the various targets. Instead, it will be limited to having a bat with some sort of item in the middle where they can hit it and that item can break. So the axe throwing has been eliminated from the project description. They also, in their project description, gave more detail about the personal protective equipment that would be distributed to each person engaging in this activity. There will be coveralls, gloves, face shields, chest protectors and rubber boots. And I believe the applicants have brought examples of what those would look like. The video, there will be video and auto, audio monitoring in all rooms. There will be six cameras throughout the facility and one in each break room. So I think there was a lot of discussion between staff and the applicant about the alcohol and drug use screening. And they came up with what I describe as a four-step approach. Before the arrival, attendees, you know, as they're making appointments, will be encouraged to look at the liability waiver for everyone attending, as well as the no drug and alcohol policy, and it'll be available on their website. So there's an opportunity, as you're making your appointment, to review that information. As people enter the facility, there will be onsite screening. Customers will be screened for speech, alcohol smell and pupil dilation. So the people checking you in will be looking for those indicators. No entry will be granted, this is what they've committed to, for any person suspected of use. And they will not be allowed to participate or to go any further within the establishment. There's been a change since I wrote the staff report about training. And we didn't identify any ABC training, but the, the two owners have identified alternative training. And there was copies of their approved certificates provided on the submitted comments. The ABC training really had to deal with serving alcohol. It was predominantly how to teach bartenders how not to over-serve alcohol and how you address that situation. There wasn't one for this type of use. I did contact our police chief, and he had, you know, some good input. You know, he can't guarantee any business is going to be safe. In fact, it really comes down to how it's operated. And, you know, we can have a business doing really well for a long time, and especially in the bar situation, if we get an operator that's not as responsible, we may start to have problems. He did contact the city of San Jose that has had this type of business. And he asked their police department if they've had any calls of service to this type of use. And last year, they did not, and nor were any specific safety concerns identified. And staff is still recommending approval of this use. These types of uses are allowed with the use permit and the extra conditions of approval that have been placed on this use. It, once again, we're looking at the finding we did for massage establishment. The planning commission needs to feel confident and find that the use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, and will not be detrimental to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. And that the proposed use will comply with any specific condition required for that use. And we've added several additional conditions. The last time we reviewed this, there was a requirement for electronic and hazardous waste plan if they decide to break any types of electronic equipment. That's going to have to be cleared through a waste plan with the city and Monterey County. They have also proposed hours of operation, safety protocols about who's allowed in the particular break room, how all of that occurs, and the standard operating procedures. And those are all detailed, they, they go on for about two pages. I can bring up their project description if you'd like me to walk through those in more detail. They've also eliminated the axe throwing, which I think they heard some concerns from the commission at the last meeting. They ensure compliance with the alcohol and drug policy. And as I wrote the condition, I said, if a training becomes available, people will have to attend it. Well, we now have a training, so we can be more specific if you would like. I did put in this use permit as well, that this use would be reviewed in six months by the planning commission, where we can review police calls, we can review general reports of any issues of concern in that area. Staff doesn't anticipate those, but it gives the planning commission an opportunity to add additional conditions of approval. In summary, staff's recommending adoption of the resolution approving the use permit. I'm happy to answer questions, I know the applicants are here as well. And I do want to mention, there were several public comments received. I know we received one from Sharon Dwight, expressed a concern about this use, and also included an article about how one party reported people act out more aggressively after these types of situations, is what I got from the article. Lori Hambaro, another neighbor, expressed concerns. And so those were all available to the planning commission in advance of the meeting on the submitted comments page. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and also receive a presentation from the applicants.
Question for Kim?
Yes, Kim, I have a question. What would you say to those who have raised the question of appropriate location for this particular use versus maybe somewhere closer to tourist, like down towards Canary Row, and preserving this lease space for neighborhood serving businesses?
So we certainly do have more active uses on Canary Row than we perhaps do on Lighthouse. The, the closest use we have to this is the escape room on Lighthouse Avenue, which also required a use permit. And we haven't had any problems with that use. Some of those more destination uses seem to be creeping up into the Lighthouse quarter. I mean, this would be the second one, right? We'd have this one in the escape room. The escape room used to be located down on Canary Row. There's a mini golf, they're doing an interior roller coaster. We used to have a carousel down on Canary Row, so it even gets, I would say, more elaborate, if you will, on Canary Row versus a single store space.
Thank you.
Would the, would the applicant be liable to including no axe or other weapons thrown? Because I hate to see knives or something like that take the place.
So I think you could easily add knives, they, they've removed that from their current project description. I think they are hopeful, hopeful in six months to a year, if this business use is going well, that the commission might consider a broader project description. But as we started our first conversation after the planning commission meeting, they said, let's just remove the axe throwing. That seemed to have the largest concern that they heard from the commission. So they were trying to address your concerns.
If it's approved, I would like to add in a prohibition against other weapons being thrown in addition to axes.
I have a question. So this, this might be more of a building department question, and it, but I know dry cleaners are a special situation as far as chemicals, especially with demolition. There's no demolition as part of this project, it's just really a, a tenant improvement situation to an existing commercial building. But are there, is there any issue with? But are there, is there any issue with dry cleaners, you know, reusing dry cleaners?
So there's definitely issues if they were demolishing the building and disturbing the soils underneath. In fact, we have a number of areas in town that were old gas stations or old dry cleaners where there is contamination under the soil. So it is identified on the EnviroStar map all the way down to, I believe it's Foam Street, because we have both a gas station and old dry cleaners. So if those soils were ever disturbed, well, before they're disturbed, through demolition or anything else, there would need to be extensive testing and site clearance and
Okay, this is just tenant improvement.
Tenant improvement without disturbing that does not trigger it.
Hanson? Oh, Mike is raising his hand. Mike Dawson.
Oh, hello. I have a question about the forms, the forms that, that, that the, the users are, are to sign. Are, have those forms been, been passed through Chrissy? For, to make sure that the city and the environs are, are not at, at legal risk due to this?
We have not, I did not share the liability form that the business is proposing that tenants or customers sign. No, I I did not have legal review of that form. And nor would I doubt, I doubt we would give legal advice on an agreement between a customer and a business owner.
Okay.
But if you want, I mean, we can always ask that question of our city.
I'm just worried that, that at one point that this whole, you will lose a block of, a block of Monterey to the owners of, to, to somebody who got hurt throwing an axe.
No axes are going to be thrown.
Yeah, a likely story.
Well, Michael, if that's there, there would be an indemnification clause. But that was only as strong as the person who signs it or the insurance. I think it's a good suggestion to run up.
It's the city attorney who approves it. That's the thing. That's what I'm looking for.
Guys, we're getting way offline. This is not, this, the city attorney has, I mean, we don't look at other liability waivers for anybody else. It's, we're just approving their use. That's all we're doing. The city has no liability for, for somebody's action at a private business.
Yeah, it's not the liability, it's the attorney's fees that kill you.
Right.
Well, we lose them anyway, so.
And he would know.
Mike Brassfield, you have something?
Oh, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Hanson, you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Can you hear public comments and/or the applicant?
All right. Thank you for your questions for the city. I think maybe it's time for the applicant to make a presentation.
Can you just make sure the green light?
Glasses with the mask, so I won't bog enough on this. Mike, yeah, okay, sorry, I was looking at that one. Thank you very much for being able to meet with us again. As Kim has stated, we took your concerns into consideration and did our very best to go above and hopefully beyond any further question that you might have. We did go ahead and eliminate the axe throwing, so there is no chance of an axe or a knife or any sort of weapon to be thrown in the facility whatsoever. We would like to revisit that at a later date. We do have certifications with the World Axe Throwing League that will actually accredit us as coaches and we can fully have certified in every aspect of the axe throwing, but that will be at a later date. We do have the safety gear that we will require each and every participant to wear from head to toe. You can see we have our face shield here, similar to a welder's mask with a cap on the top. It is adjustable and it shields down when anybody hits from over top. This comes down and blocks, so there is no, no, no possible way of hitting the neck area. We have a chest protector here, similar to that of baseball. You know, it can stop a 90 mile per hour fastball. I'm pretty sure it can stop a couple of small shards of glass as well. But everybody will be, will be outfitted with one of these. Buyer beware on Amazon. They do not specify if it is youth size or not, so unfortunately this is a youth size, but we will have correct sizes ranging from small to extra large to fit everybody. We also have a thick set of gloves, cut resistant. They have heavy protection on the knuckles here, heavy protection on the back of the fingers. We can find any other glove necessary. These ones don't make your hands sweat too well and they make you feel well protected as well as a coverall here. From head to toe, mechanics coverall, thick fabric here, cut resistant. It will cover you from head to toe, available in multiple sizes with a zipper and a button overlay. So no chance of anything coming through. We are also going to have not non-slip rubber gloves, just to make sure that we have that little extra protection on the feet as well. Or rubber boots, I'm sorry. All of the safety precautions that we take as far as the gear are above and beyond that of the nearest competition in San Jose. They require a hard hat, a pair of gloves, or a pair of glasses. That's it. They let you go in your regular street clothes. Here you go. We make sure that you know you are in good hands. Ted and I are construction professionals on our day-to-day basis. I'm a father, we are community members. We are, we are only here to make a positive impact on the community. We saw a need over this last year of ongoing stress, world going into chaos and no one has an avenue where to, where to let all this out. Or where just to clear your head for a moment. You go for a run, you have to wear a mask. I don't know about you. I tried running a mile in a mask. It's not easy. It is not fun whatsoever. Normally you go to a gym, everything, I'm sorry, everything's shut down. Or again, we had to wait eight months to just be able to wear a mask, just to work out and just to try and feel healthy, just to feel alive. I know that the quote unquote rage aspect of it can be a little off putting. But that's just the name of the industry. We are just, we are more so here to be in entertainment, to bring families together and just offer something different than your typical, let's go to the beach, let's go hike. You know, what, when you ask anybody in their twenties range, thirties range, what do you do at night? Monterey? Stay at home? I mean, it's good, family time is good. But if it's not involving going out and drinking at the clubs or a restaurant that's only open until nine AM or nine PM, what do you do in the evening? There's not very much. We just want a fair chance to just bring something to our community, have a positive impact and just show everybody that there's something fun here. You can let, let out any pent up feelings that you're having in a positive, controlled environment. And you are going to be as safe as possible.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base also on the, the, the break room aspect of it with the broken glass and everything like that, like things that people would be smashing are obviously coveralls and everything. Any younger people, that's not, they're not allowed to do that or anything like that. And for them to participate, we also have, it's, they call it like paint splatter, but it's basically water soluble paint put in like blown up balloons, basically, and little plastic bottles for kids to hit and whatnot. And they're fully fitted. They would also have to sign a waiver by their parents who's accompanying them to there. So it's not any children are participating in this, it's all adults that would be in any form of this aspect, but I just wanted to throw that in there that it's not, it seemed to get kind of over embellished with some of the description. We've had people participate in that before the kids had a blast. It's not any kind of, like Justin said, it's not a rage room. That's just what the term kind of came about on the internet and whatnot, but it is just a break room. It's for people to just get a break, have some fun, whatever reason it may be for it. And, and our experience and the testimonies we have and what we've done with it, it makes it, they're very relieved, it seems to be, and they, they enjoy it quite a bit. Like you said, we're, we're locals here and we just want to improve our community best we can and safely.
I'm sure there's questions for the gentleman and are the three people behind you with you and making a presentation as well?
They're just here to show support.
I see, okay. Questions for the applicant? Steve Millet has a question. I can see it.
Yes. Where in San Jose is the rage room located?
It's on First Street, 841st Street, right in the heart of downtown. About half a block to block and a half up from San Jose Marriott Downtown.
So it's a commercial area, a hotel?
It's right next to, down the street from some bars. The main downtown strip.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Dawson?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mike Brassfield?
I don't have any questions yet.
Okay, Mike Brassfield, you have a question?
No, I have no questions.
Dan?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The Lighthouse specific plan was created to provide a more robust neighborhood. It's called neighborhood serving. And unlike some of the other areas in Monterey, it truly is. How is your business neighborhood serving?
We bring families together, ma'am. When this was created in August of last year, I'm allowed to get anybody together for your birthday party. My kids had to lose their fourth birthday party as, you know, as many other families had to lose many special occasions to a drive-by birthday party, everybody saying hello. And, you know, it's just, it's an opportunity to celebrate like never before. You, it's just different than the house that you would bring to a house and just have the kids out there not paying attention. This brings everybody together to supervise and just, you should see the look on everybody's face. One of the most recent parties that we did was a family where as young as three years old went, all the way up to 79-year-old. Everybody participated, zero incident, and everybody was like, wow, I can't believe this. This is so much fun. It's a way just to let everybody bond and show that they're stronger than they'd, than they ever imagined. We've had people, or some of our participants left with our teenage girls, I've seen that they've never felt so powerful before in their life. So let's everybody know in the smallest aspect, you can accomplish things that you didn't know you were capable of.
One other question in the letter from Sharon about halfway down. It says, "The applicant's supporters have enjoyed pop-up events with known attendees. A stick and mortar business open to the general public is a different matter entirely. Why did you decide not to just continue with your pop-up events that were so successful?"
It's not that we are trying, we are not continuing them, we are still continuing them. But in a brick and mortar facility, we are able to better contain the structure rather than it being a actual pop-up containment. This is, our pop-ups are reinforced canopy. In a brick and mortar, it's just that, brick and mortar. It's more structured, it's more stable and it's more centered. We don't have to worry about packing everything up. We leave anything behind that anybody can trip on. This is, we have vacuums, we have mops, we have everything we need in one centered location that we don't have to worry about leaving anything behind or it not being that sturdy of a, of a containment.
And, and security cameras, adequate lighting, cycling bins, it makes it, the setup and take down time is a lot to deal with, obviously, and the safety concerns. You know, we take every precaution there is in a building. Set up for that, it would just make everything a lot more manageable and even safer than we were before.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think it's time to open public comment.
Once again, to join a Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID. Tonight's webinar ID is 161-990-8039. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. And we do have a couple of hands raised.
And Chair, just to confirm, did you want to establish a time limit for public comment or not?
I think so. We have, this is one of our major items tonight. And if the public commenters could confine to three minutes, that would just be super. I know we have a timer.
Oh, set the timer.
Okay.
Erin Decker has her hand raised. I'll go ahead and allow her to talk. Erin?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to comment. My name is Erin Decker and I wanted to offer a positive experience because I have experienced a break room or a rage room. And I cannot tell you how good I felt after. It was at a time where I was very stressed, stressed with life and I could just feel all of the frustration being left in the room and actually walking out feeling more relaxed, which was even surprising to me. And I'm also a former massage therapist and I know the importance of stress in the body and what that can actually do over time. And physical activity is one of the number one ways to help relieve stress in your body. And so this is an opportunity for this community to really add something meaningful to the community and also for the brick and mortar. I don't want to coordinate having someone come to my house to do a pop-up party. I'm very much looking forward to going with my girlfriends for an evening to have an experience at this location. My last thing that I will mention is I have worked with Justin on, in a professional manner, and I cannot tell you how amazing and professional and on top of it this person is. And I want you to know that you are investing in a business owner, a professional business owner who is also an avid community member and has been in this area for so many years. And so I really urge you to approve this so that I can go and so that the community can experience this type of stress relief as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. While we're waiting for our next caller, is there anyone here in the room who would like to make a public comment? Okay. You're next.
Is the mic still working? Okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Igor Ganzik. I own New Monterey Center. The complex has been in my family since the mid-sixties, so we've had it for many, many years. Seen it go through a lot of changes. Recently, to address your concern about the cleanup with the dry cleaners, a lot of the soil, you know, we, we've been cleaning up the entire site. It's still in the process, but in the finishing process. A lot of the soil was removed that was contaminated, so there's nothing that's contaminated anymore in the space itself. Any of the contamination is being cleaned up on the outside and it's ongoing, so the space is safe to be rented out. Okay? So that addresses that. The space has been vacant for a while because we have been doing the cleanup, but also once it became available, I'm very particular about what type of tenants I bring in to the complex because I want to make sure that it's gonna fit with the other tenants. Okay? And so I was, when I was approached by these two gentlemen, I had some reservations and some concerns like about safety, about, you know, how they're going to about safety, about, you know, how they're gonna run the business. So I didn't rent to them right away. I told them I'd have to think about it, have an application, they filled out a whole application. I reviewed the application, I did my due diligence, I researched their social media pages. I saw that their ongoing business has had no issues, no complaints. All the reviews that were left by participants were positive, no negative ones. And so also, I was concerned about safety. They told me that they have their whole protocol with all their equipment and everything like that, so that satisfied that. I even went as far as contacting my insurance. You know how insurance companies right now, you know, they don't like risks? And I was totally upfront with my insurance company because I was concerned what it might do to my insurance company for the whole complex. And they were all right with it. I explained to them exactly what this type of business is, and they said, that's fine, as long as the tenant has their liability insurance in place, my insurance company's all right with it. So, you know, I went ahead and came to the decision that I think it would be a good fit. I mean, they fit into the general plan there, they fit into the zoning. I think it'll bring extra foot traffic to the complex, that's very needed, because a lot of my tenants have been struggling through the pandemic. American Burger, they've had to shut down, several businesses were shut down, they're all still struggling. This will be an opportunity to bring in some foot traffic, some new people, because it's a unique business. So I think we need to support businesses that want to be opening up right now in this climate, which is really rare. So it's pretty bold what they're doing. I think we need to support that. There's any other questions?
Okay.
All right, thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Jermaine McLean. I am a captain with the Presidio Monterey Fire Department. Justin is my brother. First of all, I would not endorse anything, him, with him being my brother or not, I would not endorse anything that I didn't think would have a positive influence in this community. I have lived here all of my life. My wife has a small business down the street. And to address what they were saying earlier about someone possibly going on a rage or something after and being part of something like this, that, that would not be the case. When you have something like this where you go and release stress, you have what's called an endorphin release, it actually causes less stress and relaxes the body. When they're gonna check people for, make sure they're not under drugs or alcohol, they go in, into the facility to begin with, then at that point, there's not really much to worry about when you're talking about increased crime or anything like that. You've heard from the police chief out in San Jose, they've had zero incidents, and that is somewhere with a population that is quadruple of what it is here, with a much higher crime rate. I think this is something that is great for this community, and I hope you give them the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I see Shira Crawford's hands, hand is raised. I'll go ahead and allow her to speak. Shira, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, for starters, I want to thank the Planning Commission for offering directives and advice at the last meeting two weeks ago. And I want to commend the business owners for addressing each one of those concerns strategically and mindfully. I understand the, you know, the time and effort that it took, and I appreciate that you all modified your business plan, and so, under the advice of the Commission. Thank you all for doing that. I again want to mention that I am a business owner here in the city of Monterey. I'm a homeowner here in the city of Monterey. And when it comes to neighborhood improvements, or how this business will serve the community, I think as the gentleman who spoke before me mentioned, the end, the endorphin release, our community has been in this fight-or-flight mode, and people are looking for creational activities that get them out of the social distance that we've been under for almost two years. I think that that helps our community, and as someone who serves on a number of different community-serving boards here in the city of Monterey, including Governance Committee for Local Charter School here in the city of Monterey, and a multicultural counseling center here. Also, I know personally that the community is looking for opportunities to find recreations, to improve their personal lives. Something else that I wanted to mention in response to the Chair, why brick-and-mortar instead of pop-up? I think we have to remember equity when we're dealing with everything. With a pop-up shop and the business owners, and, and I'm not sure, we have never discussed this, but as I heard today, they develop a business every time someone books a party. And that bit, you know, the pop-up goes to that person's yard or to that person's driveway, and it's almost like they're recreating the business each and every time. As you all know, there's a housing crisis in the state of California, and in Monterey specifically, New Monterey, many people live in apartments. People who live in apartments do not have access to that sort of entertainment, so we then have this equity thing. So why brick-and-mortar? Brick-and-mortar deals with the, the, the issue that comes up, and may, the issue that comes up with space, and, and also equity. It addresses that because if someone wanted to have a party like me, I, you know, just had, celebrated my thirty-ninth birthday, if I wanted to have a party and I did not have the yard, I can invite my friends to this brick-and-mortar facility, just like anyone else would have, anyone else in the neighborhood and in the community would have access, and that, and that provides a real equity for the community. And, and then, of course, there's growth. What it does for our immediate community, and again, I own two businesses on that street, what it does for the immediate, immediate community and the immediate neighborhood is it revitalizes the energy. We have so many businesses who have been there for over a decade, like myself, and we have struggled, and we've witnessed our fellow businessmates close down, shut down, are on the brink of, are, are on, or they're on the brink of, of closing. So anything that has to do with growth, stress release, entrepreneurship, and also the creation of I'm, I'm all for it, and again, I did a letter to, to you all in regards to my support of this business. And also, I stood, you know, stood in front of you two weeks ago to speak on their behalf as well, and I'm here today to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Shira.
I don't see any other hands raised at the moment.
Okay. We'll close public comment then and open up for Commission comments. Want to start, Mike Brassfield?
The last meeting on this topic, one of the questions was asked of me, what training? And I've listened to one of the owners who said that he has experience as a bouncer and so forth. And I'd like to point out that it's not exclusive to law enforcement, but many people have gained that kind of experience. And given the opportunity, they learn it very fast. Having said that, I appreciate the efforts that the management went through to, on this topic, and some of the restrictions. I would suggest that among the conditions that Kim outlined earlier, that i-if they change to any rejecting or throwing of any weapons, that it come back before the Commission. Because we're, I think we're talking about a use permit here. And also that the idea that it may have benefit to the public, I don't put myself in the position to be an expert on that. But I think that the natural selection of businesses and maintaining a business will rule on that topic. Thank you.
Good point. Mike Dawson?
Mike, you still out to dinner?
He's, he's gonna unmute right now.
Yeah, I'm muted. Somebody just muted me.
Who is doing that to you?
Okay, I'm back. Um, I, I didn't have a comment. I was, I was very, very pleased to see that they had, they had left, left out the axes. And that, that, I think that was, that was my big, big alley there, that if, if someone's throwing axes, I, I know the next sound you hear will be ouch. So, you know, that's good that that's not there. Thank you.
Hanson?
I only have a couple comments. One is that I don't think it's in our, our purview to, to comment on the nature of the business in the sense that is a brick-and-mortar or is a pop-up or whatever. And then I agree with Mike Brassfield that the marketplace will decide whether or not it's a good, it's a good business. And, and I, that's not, that's not for us to, that's not for us to really decide. If they want to go to brick-and-mortar, that's great for them. The one thing that I, it's very interesting, right after our last meeting, a friend of mine on social media actually went to an axe-throwing thing and said it was a great time, so, and this was up in Seattle, though, and had a great time throwing axes, and thought it was a lot of fun. So it's just interesting that it's actually becoming a thing, and I actually, I, I don't have a problem with the axes, per se, I would like it to come back, but I just think it needs a lot more safety precautions. Then my last comment is that breaking things, right? How many times have we, has any one of us been at a house where they're about to tear down, and we immediately pick up a rock and throw it and break a window? There's something that feels good about breaking something. And whether or not it's, you know, it's, you, somebody thinks it's, 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 it's good entertainment or not. I mean, I can tell you that virtually everybody I know has thrown a rock at a window and that, when it means nothing, when you can, when a building is coming down. And that's, you know, if people want to get that release, that's great. I don't, I think it's entertainment, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold that it's, it's, it's a social benefit, but it's entertainment, and all entertainment is, to a certain degree, social benefit, so I will approve this. So I'm voting to approve.
Steve?
It doesn't sit right with me. I think it's the wrong use in, in the neighborhood. I don't know how I'm gonna vote on it yet, but I really, really am leery of this one. It reminds me of the of the miniature golf course that we approved and that was overturned by the Council on Appeal, the miniature golf course with no water. I had that same feeling on that one, and I let myself go along because I was okay. But this one, I don't know, I, I just really I really have my reservations on this one.
Dan?
Well, to say the least, the Commission has been incredibly thorough in its questions and requests for further information, and its consideration of this use permit. I mean, I've had my concerns. I was very happy to hear when Kim added the condition of a six-month review, because I think if there's any issues or problems, we get the opportunity to see it sooner rather than later. I'll support this application, and I think it was Kim adding that provision for six months, we did, throw it over the top for me.
Okay. Derek?
Yeah, I'm also in support of this item, you know, they, they got rid of the axes. It's so interesting with the, the report by the psychologist about the, the studies they've done on it and everything, but you know, I think they, the staff has done a really excellent job of every, responding to our requests for digging a little deeper. And I'm, I, I feel confident that this is an approvable use, and the applicants sure seem very earnest in what they're gonna do. I think they, they really are wanting to try to make this work, and certainly, the, the main concern is safety. And I, I feel like the applicants have demonstrated that they're really concerned about safety, too, and they're taking that very seriously.
Okay. Well, I'm with Steve. It does not sit right, and wrong use for the neighborhood, and recreational destructive violence as a mother and a grandmother, just, no, doesn't fly. So I think that at this point, we should call for motion.
I'll move to approve use permit application UP twenty-one zero-one-five-six for Recreation and Entertainment Services, major business at seven-two-four Lighthouse Avenue pursuant to the staff report and findings in the draft resolution.
And can you clarify that the training that we've now identified a training that employees will be required to
Yes.
and obtain certification for the required training?
So yes, employees will have to do the training, and then the six-month review, is that in the, or is that what, what you said was?
Six months is in there, the required training, I hadn't identified.
With the required training.
And also, no weapon throwing.
Well, it's, it's, it's not, there's no weapon throwing as part of the application, so.
Well, no, they had the axe-throwing in there.
But they removed it, so that's not part of the application anymore? Or can, can, I mean, is it, they could not do axe-throwing today, or knife-throwing, because it's not part of their application?
Um, the use permit does specify no axe-throwing. It says they're gonna break glass and paint, but for specificity, we can say no items may be thrown, and then they can obtain an amendment to the use permit in the future, perhaps, if, if it's a performing business.
So.
May I, may I ask?
So amend.
May I ask that no weapons be thrown? Throwing watermelons is fine.
No weapons, that's true.
But we'll just leave it at throwing things, I mean, that's fine.
We should restate the, the motion, because the paintball is throwing things.
Yeah.
But knives and axes is not.
No, I don't think the
Different things.
Paintball, they're, paintball, they're not throwing things, you're hitting it with an axe. I'm sorry, with a belt, with a bat. You're not throwing anything, you're hitting it with a bat, that's my, at least, that's my understanding of what it's doing.
You're not gonna be able to break any windows?
I know, it's, it's, I only do that on houses that are being destroyed, so.
How about weapons? How about just including weapons?
That's fine. So I'm, I'm, I'll amend the motion to include no throwing of any dangerous materials, including weapons.
Okay, great.
All right. So there's been a motion to approve the use permit with conditions and caveats, and the last one being no throwing of dangerous weapon-like objects.
I'll second you.
There's a second. Any discussion of the motion? Right, call for the vote.
We have a second?
Yes.
Yes, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
And there is an attendee with their hand raised, but public comment has been closed, so I'll go ahead and call the vote. Chair Freeman?
No.
Vice Chair Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Millet?
No.
The motion passes with a five-two vote. This decision is appealable to the City Council within ten days on forms available, either online or at the Planning Office.
All right, Ben. Let's gather ourselves for the last item on the agenda. Good night. Last item on the agenda is recommend city council amend the downtown and lighthouse specific plans to allow ground floor residential uses in certain situations. And begin with, I want to make a preliminary statement. I thought that the lighthouse specific plan was one of the most important things that I ever participated in. And because it included so many members of the community, the staff, the commissions, the committees, such enthusiasm, the business association, the neighborhood association, city councilperson Leon Garden, Hanson Reed, Kip Kimzey, myself, Kim, Kristy Hopper, and numerous charrettes. And to me, it's very exciting that this is coming up for an amendment that could possibly satisfy many needs on the street. Anyway, go ahead, Kim.
It's an interesting statistic. We actually had 33 public meetings for every specific plan. And I, you know, we did them at slightly different times. And I was, I was always amazed the number, the number to get it across the finish line was 33. So that was just an interesting learning lesson. And so this afternoon, evening, I keep saying afternoon, it's been a long day. The planning commission is considering a recommendation to the city council to amend the downtown and lighthouse specific plans to allow ground floor residential uses in certain situations. And we're recommending that you do forward this to the council. I just want to talk about background because we've gone back and forth over the years. And really, this effort started in March of 2020. Councilmember Williamson asked the city council to forward a inquiry to the planning commission to consider reducing commercial space requirements specifically on the ground floor in our commercial districts. And this was based on a policy paper written by the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership that looked at a variety of recommendations to increase housing supply. It's their primary objective. Planning Commission considered it in April of 2020. We got really busy with COVID, and we finally picked it up again in October of 2021. The last time you looked on, at this, the planning commission directed staff. We're looking at two amendments, one to the downtown specific plan. Residential uses should be conditionally permitted on Kai, Principal, and Tyler. On, and Adam Street, it should remain principally permitted as it is today. Regarding the lighthouse specific plan, that ground floor residential would be permitted behind commercial uses along the entire corridor and in certain locations to the street frontage. And at your last meeting, you had a discussion that there's sections of the block that need to be predominantly commercial, they're more intense, and that it might be okay to entertain residential uses on the ground floor in these less dense areas. What does this look like in the actual amendment? There is a use charge in the downtown specific plan. And I think what's important to notice is that above the first floor, it's basically permitted in almost all the districts except for the sports center is. So we're really talking about the ground floor. And the idea is, is that it would be principally permitted on the ground floor in most of the districts. And there's one caveat to this is we're really trying to preserve Alvarado Street and the first block of Del Monte and Franklin for commercial uses. Ground floor residential would not be allowed actually fronting the street, allowed behind, but not fronting the street. And that on Cali, Principal, and Tyler Streets, it would be conditionally permitted. And in the remaining areas of the Alvarado District, it would remain permitted. So the idea is Alvarado Street, the spaces facing Alvarado, no residential, first floor, second and third are fine. Cali P and Tyler, where it's currently prohibited, it would be conditionally permitted. And this is the map. This is, you know, when we were working on the downtown specific plan, this was, and this is an existing map in the plan. It just says frontages where offices and personal services, that was a big discussion during the specific plan. We didn't want them on the first floor on Alvarado Street. Nor, and now we're adding and residential uses. But basically, in the balance of the district or in the downtown specific plan, residential uses would either be conditionally permitted or permitted by right, with the exception of the sports center and the, the park in the downtown. It's a pretty minor amendment in terms of literally, these, these are the changes you would see in the specific plan. And then we added residential uses on this title. So the lighthouse specific plan. So right now, the lighthouse specific plan only allows residential uses on the second or third floor or in existing or previously used residences. And that was the idea that like the the Green Mansion on Lighthouse maybe could convert back to residential. So that's what the current policy is. And so this would open that up. Plan will allow mixed use projects, ground floor residential uses located behind commercial uses. So it'd have to be located in the back and in certain locations to the street frontage in the Lighthouse Avenue character area. And then we're going to have a figure where we can consider that. So EMC Planning Group was nice enough to volunteer their services and do some GIS work for our department as well as an existing land use survey that's in your packet, and I can share with you in more detail. But basically, the idea is, is that core area with no yellow would be where ground floor residential to the street frontage would not be allowed. But in the yellow areas, those areas could be possibly redeveloped to allow ground floor residential. And so, and I think we all know the, the more dense area along Lighthouse includes like where Hula's is, Gianni's, that more restaurant core. And we are recommending this to you this afternoon. I do have, I can pull up the packet, I can go through the existing land use survey that's in your packet. If you want to see, they went building by building to determine use, which was very helpful. So public comments, what did we receive? We received positive comments from several residents of the new Monterey neighborhood. I believe Hilori Humbario submitted a, a positive response. Mike DeLappa, who represents Land Watch, supported ground floor residential. The idea of infill development is still encouraged. And I think there were one or two other public comments from the neighbors supporting this use. There is a comment that hasn't been submitted, but I did receive a call and Rick Johnson was here for a little bit tonight, but couldn't stay. They do have, the business association would like to see on this yellow area that the ground floor residential be conditionally permitted, not permitted by right. They would like there to be some review. Their concern is, you know, how much is this going to change the market?
Yeah.
And are they going to permanently lose ground floor commercial in this area? Or will there be a mix of uses? And we know the residential market is strong. Is it enough to tip it that they will lose the sense of their district? And so by having it conditionally permitted, they believe that issue can be addressed. I do want to share one thing with you. It's a more recent development that we're looking at. One of the laws the state of California has adopted. And we're still researching it to see what it means. But what I believe that it says is that if you, as a city, have not constructed your regional housing needs allocation, which this year was, or this past eight years, it was close to six to 700 units. We've built about 100 in this eight-year period, including ADUs and everything else. That they're going to take away our ability to do discretionary review, both design review as well as possibly conditional permitted uses. We're still researching that, how extensive that is. But one of the things that may be happening for both architectural review and perhaps conditionally permitted uses is we may have to come up with a checklist. And that can only be reviewed at the building permit. And it's basically meant to be a way, I guess, at the state level to ensure that housing is built, that it doesn't go through undue discretionary process. And maybe a little bit as a punishment, I see it as, is if you haven't built arena, you know, that's, you're, we're going to take away some privileges that local government has. As we look forward to the next arena cycle, AMBAG, actually this week, will, it'll be their third hearing on the regional housing needs allocation. You know, we have about, I think, six, between six and 700 units, and it's the last arena cycle. Right now, our tentative allocation is 2,200, and I think 11 units, of which 900 plus have to be zoned for very low income use. And so this commission is really gonna, you know, we're going to really be working hard when those numbers are adopted by summer of 2022. We're going to be in the debate of our housing element. And wherein, how are we going to accommodate 2,200 new dwelling units? Just to put it in perspective, the city of Monterey has about 10,000 housing units right now. So it's a pretty big significant increase. And if we have to come up with checklists for all of our development, I just want you to know that may be forthcoming. So we may say conditionally permitted today, which will mean a use permit in front of the planning commission. But in the future, it's reasonably foreseeable that those powers will be taken away from the city. So with that, we're recommending a couple of changes. This is the downtown.
Kim, a question on that.
House.
On the, if the state wants to do that with our water restrictions, is the city prepared to challenge that state mandate?
So what's interesting about this is you can adopt a housing element that shows adequate sites, but you don't have adequate infrastructure to build it, which to me seems sort of ludicrous that regionally, we're saying, oh, all these units need to be built in Monterey, and we know we can't build them because of water. But the housing element law is currently written, would just have us identify that as a constraint, water. And the, the thing that's hopefully on the future with the state becoming, you know, a major objective is to build housing. The water side of the equation, the State Water Resources Control Board, the California Coastal Commission, and HCD. I'm hoping that we'll have elevated conversations. We can't build housing if we don't have water. That's my opinion. We can't set a new water meter. We can't increase water credits.
And that's not fair that we can generalize.
Well, we can build it, we just can't occupy it.
Well, we can issue permits for it.
No.
So all of that's coming. And
I should also point out, Karen, I've been informed that there's an initiative from Southern California being circulated to retain local land use prerogatives and remove them from the state. So that's by no means a final word.
You know what is really interesting about this proposal on Lighthouse is that it already is a intimate street. It already has a mixture of former residential homes being used as businesses, three huge mansions, the green one, the one that the builder owns, what's his name, the Danish builder, Carl Outson owns one, and then the Green Mansion. But there are sprinkles of all different kinds of residential homes now being used commercially, along with straight commercial. And the thing that, that kind of got to me was councilperson Williamson was trying to figure out a way to incentivize ADUs for low, for your low housing, low income housing goals. Whereas creating a mixture, a checkerboard of mixed residential and commercial and lighthouse could be the very thing that would be a better way of incentivizing the low income housing. Because it's already there. You know, it's already been built.
Oh, in that line, Sandy, I think, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have in the city, what is it, about eight or nine guest houses?
Yeah, we permitted last year, it was about, it was between 11 and 15 accessory dwelling units. Of course, the major limitation on that is you have to have enough water credits. But we've been approving about 10 a year, roughly.
Well, the existing guest houses cannot be rented out, and they cannot have a kitchen. And I, as I recall, all the ADUs have to have a kitchen. But there is additional housing available with guest houses, but it's certainly not, certainly not a lot of them.
That concludes my presentation. Commissioner comments or public comments?
I think all of the public comments were really wildly positive. And again, this, this is an approach that will gain volume quickly if there are people who are willing to develop the residential. Go back to the CEO of EMC. There were two proposals. One was a certain percentage of residential conversion by block or a certain ability to go backwards and forwards. You know, if the marketplace dig, commercial that you could, you know, change back to requiring commercial. Are your thoughts on those two things?
So the amendment we have drafted would allow that flexibility. For example, just thinking about the building that EMC Planning Group owns, it has a bakery on one side on the lower level and part of their existing office on the other side. One of the options would be they could rent that out for commercial use, low water using office or something, or retail. Or they could potentially convert that to residential under this scenario. So I think it does, the amendment we've drafted does allow that flexibility. And I believe I saw earlier, at least this evening, EMC Planning Group was on the line to make a public comment. So we could also have Mr. Rose talk about it.
So, Kim, could you please point specifically to where this numerical thing of number of units per block?
So we didn't, it's just 30 dwelling units per acre. So that's the existing density standard that we continue to apply. So you take the square footage of lot, multiply it by 30 and square feet in an acre, and you'd come up with the density allowed. If you exceeded 30 dwelling units per acre, you would need a use permit.
Okay. And the, the map that that you provided with the yellow areas, that they're a very long one, there it is. So it's hard to really, you know, I understand what's going on. I know which streets are involved there. I see the, the little yellow square towards the top is sort of L-shaped. It's the, I guess it would be the south southwest part of it is, is not included in that L. But it's, so, you know, this is a very specific map here. Is this what we would be sending to the city council then? Specific, you know, burning use permits?
Yeah, so this, exactly. So in these blocks of yellow, you, we would be considering, as I drafted, principally permitted residential uses on the first floor in those yellow areas.
Right.
New Monterey Business Association is recommending conditionally permitted. So that might be something you want to consider. Versus today, it's prohibited, except for existing or previously used residential structure. So it's the change. Right now, residential is primarily second and third story. And it allows it behind commercial uses up and down the street. And then in these yellow blocks, it could be It could be, as I've drafted it principally permitted, but New Monterey Neighborhood or Business Association is saying consider conditionally permitted.
One thing that they have going in their favor is that because it's an older, it's only eight blocks long. It's an older street. It means that there is plenty of parking behind these buildings. For whatever purpose, you know, needs to be served.
And also just to answer Commissioner Latastas' question, the, the L shaped piece is the Coast Guard property. I did think about just extending the yellow across that front, so if. The Coast Guard property went away through some sort of federal action.
Right.
Is our vision to have that as ground floor residential facing Lighthouse? I mean, you could really see that happening, the federal government disposed of the property for whatever reason. Or do we not want to allow that and we would want to see that predominantly commercial?
I, I have another question. The last meeting where we discussed this, Hansen had a. A point about corners. Being, you know, maybe making more sense as commercial. And with any consideration given to that yellow, long yellow part down towards the coast guard?
So the corners that were identified were at those intersections. I was hoping, I actually have the packet here. I just don't know if I. Because I, I can actually zoom in better on the. Let me just try this and see if, sorry, we have a lot of presentations up. Let me just close out of all these because it's been a long night.
Don't save, oh my God, whoever does that.
Let me just look and see if I can pull up the. Sorry, because I can blow up the. I'll do a better job in the planning commission packet. Sorry, just one moment. Okay, so let's see if I can share the screen now and then we will be in a good place. Okay, so if you zoom in on the, can everyone see the graphic now? I can make it larger. We have David Avenue in Irving, and so it's a portion of that, and then we identified the major intersections. Along. Lighthouse Avenue. And so that, that's how the major intersections were approached. You know, there was some hint of a conversation, should all the corners be kept as commercial? There was discussion about that. That's not exactly what we prepared, but I know that was part of your discussion.
It was just a point that was brought up for discussion.
Yeah, and I didn't mean, I meant the major intersections that, that are marked, so that, that's exactly what. Were I meant. I didn't mean every intersection, it's just, it was kind of the main. Business intersections on the Lighthouse Avenue, the corner should not be. You know, residential on the corner, should be business.
And then we also have, and if you want to look at these, in the packet, we have the existing land use surveys that. Have to scroll to the right page, but we can. If you want to discuss like, you know, block by block, there's.
This is so helpful.
I thought they were really helpful.
And that was EMC provided that.
They did.
It's a lot of work.
It was. And so, you know, this is where we start, you know, down by the, the curve, there's Coast Guard Station. This is the first block where we could potentially see ground floor commercial. So there's a. Commercial insurance, wellness center, cabinets, interior design, architecture, commercial vacant. There already is a residential space here on the corner. As we move down to Reeside, we have the haircut place, I think it's True Cuts. There's a bar, there's the new Outson, I call it the Outson project, thirty Lighthouse. Then we have Subway and the mattress store, we have Poppletons, the artisan shop, a dental office, rugs. The vape shop, residential hair salon. And we have our senior center, we have seven eleven, a gym, a spa, you know, both struggling with vacancies. I think the spa is actually vacant. So we have the greenhouse, we have a restaurant, that small. Restaurant right here, we have that bakery and then EMC.
We're still in yellow, right?
Yeah, we're still.
I see, yeah.
And so then we come down here. We just, this was Drake, there's a restaurant, this is where Baskin Robbins is. There's a vacant building here.
Hodges Rentals.
Yeah, it was, I'm not sure. And then we've got vacant, a restaurant vacant. Restaurant supply, wedding rentals, carpets, vacant again. So we have a lot of vacancies, I mean, just anecdotally at this end, and then it starts getting, you know, eventually here. A little bit more dense. You've got physical therapy, you've got. You know, the boutique art galleries, restaurants, bakery, nail salon, the escape room, the tanning, the thrift. Yeah, I think that's Goodwill. This is a residential.
Goodwill needs to move over to Hodges Rentals. That would really open that one up.
And we've got the CVS here on the corner and, you know, we have a lot of very popular.
Where, where do we merge out of the yellow on this, at this intersection?
I think the yellow is at McClellan.
And so I'm curious, you know, you, this was written as principally permitted uses?
On ground floor residential.
And the suggestion of it being conditionally permitted, how do you feel about that?
I think that's feasible to do. You know, the question is what issues would the planning commission want to look at? You probably would look at parking supply, which is required anyways by the code. You know, you could look at adjacent uses and if the residential uses were incompatible for some reason, you could possibly not approve them. Saying that, 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 that power may go away. So I just, I just need to put that out there. It's like, you might be able to do that today, but not in the long term. You know, I guess as I think about it, you know, we do have that bar down, we just went this street. We have the commercial bar located right here. We do have residential directly adjacent, so if you were to look at a ground floor. Residential project here or here. Sometimes nighttime noise, although here we are, we allow second and third story right next door. So would it make a difference with ground floor? It might in your minds. I, you know, you think about safety and compatibility, would you? For some reason not approve that use? I'll just keep going down. And then obviously, this is the market at the end and the very successful new breakfast place, the Wakenings that used to be down the street. We have a liquor store, event space, residential. And then it starts getting more intense through here as well with a lot of commercial uses, so. The attempt was made to identify those areas that are more commercial, I'll say. And then on the ends of the streets, we're starting to see higher vacancy and maybe where residential uses could happen. And I'll stop talking, sorry.
Well, is the man, forget his name, from EMC on the line? That would be a public comment, right?
It would be.
Go ahead, Kim, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to read this again? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, it's Michael Groves with EMC Planning Group. We, I, I would just advocate strongly that the staff recommendation moved forward to the city council. You know, walking that street thoroughly from one end to the other. And logging everything that was happening on that street, it, it is amazing how many vacancies and underutilized. Buildings there are on that street. I, it, it really needs a boost to come alive and what. It's, I always liken it because I'm a baseball guy, I liken it to you can't make any money at the major league level unless you have butts in the seats, right? Well, you got to have feet on the street here in order to make this work and feet on the street means. I'm, I'm living there and I'm going to go use the, the business next door to me or just down the street from me. So we left the Coast Guard Station out on purpose in our discussions. Mostly because we, I think the Coast Guard Station, if it did go away, would be like, I would have that designated as a special treatment zone. And have some kind of a master plan for that site as a part of it. I don't see it allowing, you know, just any kind of use that happens there. I think you really want to look at that piece. I also wanted to emphasize the corners piece. We look strongly at the corners on this land use inventory. And the corners, the Mariposa Hall we left alone on the one corner, we left the Coast Guard Station alone on the other piece down at the other end. But the other corners were all pretty active corners, and when we got to McClellan, the active corners were on the. What do we call it? The Pacific Grove side of that intersection, not on the Monterey side of that intersection. Sorry to bring up another city, but if you know what I mean, instead of going, I think it's what we call the north side. And then, so that, that had to do with the corner, so we felt those were the active corners. Most of the other corners that we looked at down the blocks were. Either vacant or underutilized and really unfortunate. I mean, you look at it, it's almost sad. To, to walk along that corridor and go, wow, this, it was worse than I thought it was and I, and I live and. I don't live on the corner, but I lived there because I've worked there every day, so. But, you know, I'm, I'm used to being there, but I didn't really, hadn't really spent the time to look at it. So I think the, and I think the flexibility is built into the code that, that, in the language that. Kim has got because it allows both commercial and residential, so you can interchange depending on what the market is, is dictating. And I think that's what Councilmember Williamson's original direction was. So I strongly advocate the staff report, the, the request to have it conditional, I don't agree with. I think it ought to be permitted by right. I think the state of California, if you, if you look at the laws and understand them, they're putting a lot of pressure on the cities to. Beat the Rena numbers and permitting by right is where the state is going. If you wanted to put conditional on it, what I would suggest is you do it at five or more units. So that you're matching up with your affordable housing program to add five or more units. If it's under that, I think it shouldn't be conditional. So those are my thoughts. And we did leave on McClellan, we did leave the, as I said, the, the north side of that intersection alone. So really, it's about a half intersection there to try to be commercial straight through. So that's my recommendation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
What if it's five, what if it's less than five units? Is that where you say it should be principally permitted?
Sandy, I think, this is Hudson, I think he said that it should all be principally permitted, but if we wanted to make it conditional, that. Five or make a cap at five or more, then it, five or more would, you would require. It would only be conditionally permitted by, and then planning would come to planning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, you are muted, so I apologize for speaking for you.
No, you articulated better than I did.
Yeah, Rick is there.
Unmuted.
Thank you, here I am. Kim, first of all, thank you very, very much. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay. Kim, thank you very much. I think you articulated it better than I'm going to do right now. We would ask you at this point to keep it as, or to make it conditional rather. Than, than primarily. Because, yeah, mostly because one, I shouldn't say mostly, one is, I understand that. The state may be moving that way, but let's not give in to them before we have to, if we have to. You would keep the authority to be able to approve. So we simply want to keep the authority at the planning commission at this point, so there can be input. Now, with that said, I'm going to switch real quick to OMBA and say, downtown, thank you very much for the way it was written. That's something we can certainly get behind, but it's just changing that one word in New Monterey. From principally and, and, you know, keeping that authority here with you. At this point. Did I confuse it completely?
No.
No, you made the point.
Because it always change.
That's right, and, and I do, you know, I just want to address real quickly the vacancies down there because there's a lot of them.
Yep.
But we are in a pandemic and we lost businesses during the pandemic and we're hoping that'll come back. But Lighthouse has traditionally been a street where we had incubator businesses. So we had businesses come in, make it and move on to other areas. So I'm not downplaying the vacancies because they're a concern to all of us, but let's just. Remain being able to control it through conditionally at this point. That's my, that's my two cents. Thank you very much for listening to me. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. Your deux centimes are valuable. Well, if no other public comments, we have commission comments. Well, Terry, do you start?
Okay. I'm very impressed with all the work that's been done. I'd like to thank staff and EMC for. All this work and analysis of responding to our requests. I guess I'm in, I'm in support of this document that's been put before us. We, we have a little change up that has been recommended regarding. What would be principal, principally allowed, I guess, versus conditional regarding this five unit. Maximum, which I have to admit kind of makes sense. And so I, you know, I think we're pretty close here. It, it, it kind of reminds me of the poor city of Carmel has been so lovingly massaging. And they're so meticulous, their zoning ordinance is so fussy and meticulous, it's, it's kind of crazy actually. To deal with, and then the state says, oh, you have to do ADUs, and it's, okay, well, you can put an eight hundred and fifty square foot thing in the backyard, no problem. So after this decades of, of just insanely detailed zoning ordinance. They throw it all out the window because the state told them to, but I, I agree with what Mr. Johnson said, so we don't want to give it away. Before we have to, and I, I think we're obliged to go through this process. I really appreciate. Councilman Tyler's sort of leadership on it.
Agree. Anybody else?
Well, I, I agree with what Terry just said, that I think a lot of really good work has been done here, particularly for. This specific area on Lighthouse, I'm in support of, of what we have. I, I do think we should. At including the conditional uses for anything over five minutes and exert our ability to. Review this while we still have it.
Out there in Zoomland?
I'll start. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's all good. I will support it no matter what, but what do I want to say about the conditionally permitted? I mean, I guess five is a good compromise at this point in time. I, I just think that, you know, part of this is we're trying to add housing, potential housing. Um I I just think that, you know, part of this is we're trying to add housing, potential housing stock. And when you're putting a barrier and conditional use permitting is a barrier. Because all of a sudden it adds costs associated with getting it approved. Um versus just getting it designed and going in and getting the building permit process going. And I think that is that's a barrier to um it raises the cost of housing. Um and if you remove that, and this is an area where we we designated, you know, certain parts of the Lighthouse District. Not the core center of the district, but the at the outskirts of it. Uh you know, I think it's fine to have it permit- permissible, per- permissive, whatever. I'm like, I'm trying to say. Primary uh came come up with the the two Ps that I'm trying to put in there. So so I I just think that that I mean, I'm going to go to support it no matter what. I think the worst case is we do we do anything over five is conditionally. Um permitted and anything under five is is principally permitted. But again, I I to a certain degree, I think just the nature of the first floor and the number of buildings. More likely than not, on all of this, you're not going to get to five on almost anything anyway. So. Uh it's just that they're small buildings unless you can you'd have to get, you know, consolidation of ownership and build it together and things like that. So but again, I just my worry is that there is a a barrier to entry or barrier to because of the conditional permitted. If we make it conditionally permitted. So but again, I think it's better than what was there. So.
Well, what is the easier way to stretch upward? Put in two types of uses principally and conditionally or to just throw one in conditionally? And then hear what the city council has to say and back down into some.
I'm in favor of conditions, by the way.
Yeah.
If anybody's asking.
Of uh the the flexibility of Moses.
Yep. You know, the state can always take it away, but then they can always give it back.
They never do.
Or we can take it back with.
We can take it back.
Initiative. So as far as, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't try and say, well, we're going to give it up because the state's going to take it. I think we need the flexibility and, you know, it may very well be that we'll obtain information. On less than five units from neighbors that that will prevent a mistake that otherwise we would make or we wouldn't make. But a mistake that would be made by giving away uh the ability to condition the permits.
Stephen, are you are you recommending, even if you're just doing one, to be a conditionally permitted?
Yes.
See, I don't I don't agree with that. I think that and I I think that that is that is it's contrary to what our direction was.
I know, Hudson, you and I disagree on that. And I will support either one, but I prefer the uh. The conditional uh use permit for the planning commission. As opposed to giving it up to five or at all.
Well, it would be if it's up to five or greater would be quite limit the. I and I think five or greater should have, I mean, that would be an okay compromise, five or greater and have. Um conditionally permitted and less than five, so four up to four would be potentially permitted. So. That would be my recommendation, but I would, you know.
Well, I know your recommendation. My recommendation is that we do it uh and and it make them all conditional.
Who wants to make a motion?
Well, actually, if I may, my my only concern, and I listened to all the arguments on one side or the other. But I, the only thing that's sticking in me is that the size of the lots, many cases are fairly small. So if we make that that cutoff at five. I just feel a little conservative in it. At at five is maybe too high. I would. Look at four because it's even that a quite a consideration.
I think it'd be very tough to get four units into a lot of those buildings.
That's my point. I looking at those lots, if we make it a five, it's just it may be. Giving away a lot.
Yes.
So that's my two cents.
Because you think think about it, if if there if there are two stories, the tops, the top is already units. So what we talk, all we're talking about here is ground floor. And I I don't see getting four units into any of those buildings on on Lighthouse. That'd be tough.
Chair, um just just a point of 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 just a comment. EMC has his hand raised. I know we've closed public comment. But um, you know, he's they've been very helpful to us and done a lot of work um on this. And I I would recommend that you reopen public comments again and allow him to speak. And then we have whoever else needs to to speak in public comment can still do that. So.
Okay, reopening public comment and you're on, Michael.
Thank you so much, uh Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, Commissioner Reed. Appreciate it. It was just a simple comment. I just wanted to clarify. For Commissioner Brassfield that that was what I was suggesting, that it's basically, it's just a matter of terminology. When I say five or more, that means four. So four would be, that that terminology means four would be. Permitted by right and five, six, seven, and on up would all be required as a conditional use permit. So the cutoff is four.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
So I need to clarify with the planning commission as you're discussing this. Uh so right now. Upper floors are principally permitted. When we're talking whatever number you come up with, if you decide to. Is that only the number on the first floor? So if there's four residential units or five residential units. On the first floor, those are conditionally permitted, but I would hope we would keep principally permitted on the top floors. So I I just needed, as you deliberate this, if you could just make that clear for me, I would appreciate it.
This is Hudson, and that's what I meant. So yes.
That's my understanding, too. Just first floor.
First floor.
Yeah, that's what I was considering. That's why I looked and talked about size.
So four permitted principally or four permitted by right, five and above conditionally permitted.
We're talking just the first floor here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Can you can you point a finger at any of those buildings that that could have six units or five units? I think four would be a stretch. Two would be more likely.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe CVS.
Well, CVS.
Yeah, but they're in the they're in they're in the the area where it's not allowed.
Yeah.
So a five thousand square foot lot in total, uh the density of thirty D's acre would be three units. So let me go up to ten thousand square foot lot now.
And how many of those are there on on that street?
You know, they would have to assemble parcels. I think somebody brought that up. So if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, you would have. Seven total residential units permitted by right. Let's say four or above and three or below, then it still would be principally permitted, what you're talking about. If somehow as they had five, you know, we're talking larger lots. They would have to assemble lots. And I don't want to suggest that's not going to happen in the future. It clearly did with the Doctors on Duty lot. It did with um two thirty Lighthouse. Um and you know, you really look at some of the underutilized lots sort of from Poppleton's. Toward the Presidio, there's there's opportunities with vacancies if somebody wants to assemble properties.
Right.
So um I think it could happen if we have a developer ambitious enough to assemble. And purchase properties. Probably the only one that's currently under common ownership that where that could occur is probably the CVS property. But the CVS property was in our more dense commercial area. Because everything else is owned by individual owners. We didn't see a lot of common ownership along Lighthouse.
Can we can we differentiate between first floor and first floor, first floor and and above? Because.
These.
And odds when we're talking uh seven units and three are on the first floor and four on the second.
What about business units?
I think this is the page everybody's discussing, the regulatory page is like. And that box with the circle, do we put a C for conditionally permitted? So if any density exceeds thirty to only use break road require use permit. Um and then the other is um new residential first floor uses in the Lighthouse Avenue corridor are permitted behind commercial uses. We would change that um conditionally permitted for something about more than four. And in certain locations is depicted. So we would we would put a number in there as well for conditionally permitted. And that's just a judgment call. I don't I don't know if there's any right or wrong.
Would Kim, would would the developer be required to put in affordable housing only if he saw the density bonus?
No, so we have two triggers right now for affordable housing, and that's where Mr. Groves came up with the five units. So our general plan and our inclusionary housing ordinance says any project that proposes. Five five new residential units rental or ownership or we're subdividing an existing rental project into condominium ownership. Twenty percent have to be dedicated um to low and moderate income and it's a split. It's a fifty.
Split. Problem for a five unit.
Yeah, it has to be above five units for the inclusionary ordinance. And so that's often a decision point for developers, right?
Yes.
Five or five or market rate above that, they're going to have to accommodate very low or low and moderate income housing.
Well, if it's five, don't they aren't they required to be one?
Yeah, at five, sorry, five and above.
But I mean, I so I I what if we drop it down to principally limited permitted would be three? And anything above three would be required the conditional. So if we're reducing it by one rather than the five.
And that's on the first floor.
Because it's on the first floor. Again, and we're only talking on the first floor. We're not talking about above the first floor. That principally permitted would be three units on the first floor. Um anything above that would be conditionally permitted.
I think I could buy that.
So can I? So can I?
Me too.
Okay. Okay, so then I would make a motion. Directment to the city council uh to amend the downtown and lighthouse specific plans to allow ground floor residential in certain situations. Pursuant to the staff report and the findings in the resolution with the. Change to the documents as presented such that the Lighthouse. First floor, anything over three units on the first floor would be would require conditional approval. Not permiss- permissibly permitted.
Reed's well, there's been in a second, any discussion of the motion? Okay, call for the vote.
Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
No.
What we do wrong?
Wild opposition here.
Okay, thank you.
And this item will be um forwarded to the city council for consideration. So obviously, there's no appeal.
And they may have ideas, too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. So one quick run through the uh planning commission agendas coming up.
Yes, we're actually going to cancel um the meeting, the second meeting in November. We will be meeting in December, most likely. Will definitely on the fourteenth and we'll try to cancel the last meeting.
Okay.
Um important dates for you to be aware of is I'm sorry, is it the planning office update? The Avid Hotel Appeal will be on um December twenty first in front of the city council.
Could you put the screen up, please?
Sorry.
There we go.
There you go. Um the city council will be considering the Avid Appeal on December twenty first. Um other important things to note, um and I I've included it in your report. Um the city um has a fairly significant ordinance amendment for organics collection. Um and so as much as we've had to change in the past where we went from just trash to trash and recycling. The the newest version of this under the Senate Bill eighteen thirty-three is organics collection. And that will be getting much more stringent in the it it's required to be adopted by January first, twenty twenty. Um it will be moving all of us to all of our kitchen scraps and stuff. We'll be putting in ultimately in our green waste bin. So it's the next. Major um change in trash collection. So be aware of that. Um there was some.
Did you say twenty twenty, Kim?
I meant twenty twenty uh this January. I'm sorry, January twenty twenty fifth. Um so all the cities are changing their waste regulations um to respond to that. Um you will also be seeing rate increases to address this issue because you have to create a whole new infrastructure system to support it. The ADU ordinance, second reading, was approved by council. It becomes law on December second. Um we're working with the Planning Commission chair on our ADU website, a couple planners here at the city. So we're looking forward to launching that in December. And then um just a city council agenda item you probably want to watch. The city received um a request, I believe it was um from LULAC. About moving from at-large elections to district elections. Um I believe that'll be considered by the council, I think maybe as early as next Tuesday. Um the first step in that process. So um that's a that's a fairly big change for our city. So I recommend if you're interested. Um you should read um Ms. Navi's staff report and what the next steps are coming. Um in terms of cannabis regulation, um the city manager's office, it will most likely be. Hopefully, we have time on December twenty first to report to the city council on where we are with cannabis. And so our expectation is in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, we'll be working on the retail cannabis ordinance. So that'll be a major push for us as well. Happy to answer any other questions. We have a lot going on in the planning office.
I yeah, Kim, a couple of meetings ago, you mentioned having an informational meeting for us about all these new state laws. Is that is it changing too fast to grab onto it or is that still being planned?
No, we're still planning it. Um Pacific Grove, actually, I just listened to theirs. They brought in an attorney to present SB nine and SB ten. In the context of their housing element. Um so we're going to be doing something similar with SB nine, SB ten, SB thirty-five. Um I will say the laws are as thick as reading the ADU law. I mean, it literally took a year of implementation. Um I I you know, the housing attorneys we worked with just said it, you know, they wrote it so quickly, the state did. And there was so much different input um that it was um. It's 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 interesting, you know, answering questions on the counter, how we always get stumped, to be honest. And we're, you know, after a year, we're not really anymore, but it it took that long. Um but we are going to present on SB nine, SB ten, and SB thirty-five. So there were, yeah, I think there were something like twenty new bills passed this year. Last year, I have them all printed out. They're this thick. It's a three-inch binder. Um yeah, you and I don't know if you, you know, it's interesting. You should go online and look at the press release. The Attorney General for the State of California just released about creating. A housing strike team to um and to bring, I think it was twelve attorneys. Um from different sectors to specifically challenge cities and decisions on housing. And the most recent one, uh the City of San Francisco just denied a couple of weeks ago a housing project. I think it was five hundred housing units. a, uh, housing project, I think it was five hundred housing units, so, you know, much bigger scale. Um, and they denied it based on the secret determination and concerned, I believe, on geologic issues. And the state attorney general said that they would be researching that decision to see if it violated any of the new state laws. So, um, this Housing Accountability Act, our new RENA, our new, it, it's, um, you know, it'll be an interesting, as we were sort of work through all these issues and look about, where does Monterey want to build new housing? And we build it, um, especially in the line of two thousand two hundred housing units.
Yeah.
I have a related question. Somebody asked me, uh, apparently, well, not apparently, we pay a nickel deposit on all aluminum cans?
Yeah.
And now there, is there any place in the city where they can be redeemed?
There is. You can actually redeem, redeem them in a lot of the major stores inside the outside recycling centers that we all found easier. Um, the businesses, I know Whole Foods eliminated it. It eliminated, used to be at Nob Hill.
Safeway's eliminated it.
Yeah, they were having lots of business challenges, and all of those businesses decided to close those facilities. And, um, I believe, um, and we can have Ted, um, a lot of the businesses accept them on the inside, but it's not as obvious.
And it's limited in number.
Oh, is it?
Does anybody know who they are, where they, what they are, so I can tell people?
Um, I can have Ted, um, reach out to you. Ted, to process our sustain.
Send an email me, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice if they could put it on a webpage.
It would be, no, yes.
Okay, it may even be up already. We'll look.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Long evening, good work.
Great job, Erica.
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.